Chairman, members of the board, it's officially 9:30 a.m. and today's Thursday, July 30th. My name is Brian Zumwalt. I'm the Director of the County's Office of Technology and Innovation. I'll be playing the role of technology moderator for today's virtual meeting. On the panel with me is Don Crowell from the County Attorney's Office. He'll be serving as process moderator and will also be sitting in for Jewel White today, representing the County Attorney's Office. Before we get started, let's do a quick roll call, make sure we've got adequate communications, and then I will turn it over to Commissioner Eggers. Commissioner Welch.
I am here, Brian.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Long.
Good morning, Brian. I'm here.
Good morning. Thank you. Commissioner Justice.
Good morning, Mrs. Zumwalt.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, Brian, I'm here.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Seal. Commissioner Eggers, I didn't see Commissioner Seal log in this morning. Is she away today? Do we know?
I don't know. I have not heard.
She was going to participate, so she must be having a technology issue.
Okay, all right, we'll give her a couple of minutes. And then Commissioner Gerard is over at the supervisor's office. Okay, so Commissioner Eggers, with that, I think you've got your form. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, I was just going to say that Chair Gerard is going to be at the, doing her duties on the canvassing board this morning, so she won't be with us today. And just a couple of comments, but first, I would be remiss if I didn't say happy 40th birthday to Brian Zumwalt. I guess it was Tuesday, but I just wanted to acknowledge everybody that it's your birthday today. So happy 40th.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I won't ask you guys to sing. I appreciate that.
Thank you for spending it with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have you. And the good news about having me today is because I'm not going to be on mute, I won't be making that mistake the whole day. So that's a good thing. Anyway, just a couple of comments. Again, I always like to say that I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to our residents for so gracefully and amazingly dealing with this pandemic over the last four months. You know, it's, it doesn't, it's not lost on all of us. Prayers go out to their families and folks that have lost loved ones and people who are sick right now. We're with you. We feel your pain. And hospitals or nursing homes, et cetera. And just really want to also extend our well wishes and prayers to those who are suffering financially and emotionally during these tough times. Just want to make sure that you knew that we were with you as well. Thanks to the staff and the leadership team, and that includes our doctors, our sheriff, our EM folks, our schools, and many others for, and all the other staff who've really stepped up during this time. You know, it's just amazing the amount of work that they normally do and adding their additional responsibility. Also, thanks to the partners, the many partners that we have, the cities, the food banks, the 2-1-1s, the nurses and volunteers who stand up the test sites, and on and on. So many folks that make what's going on here possible. So, and all of the work that's getting done. And then finally, a big thank you to the medical professionals and our first responders for the work that they do. I, and again, I, you know, I looked around the country and some of the things that are going on, and what we have here, I think, is a community that is, that primarily focuses on civility. So I really appreciate that, and I continue to look for that from all of our residents as we try to work with each other. We're going to move into the first item, which is citizens to be heard. And as you know, the chair brought that back so that we could hear from residents who want to talk to us about something that's not on the agenda. So, and under state of emergency, we'll be giving opportunities for folks to talk about anything related to COVID or the pandemic or any of the emergency resolutions that we're going to be looking at. This section is really about trying to hear from residents who may have something else that's on their mind. It's just, it was not lost on me the other day. I was sitting here and I got an email from somebody who had some speed issues in their neighborhood. And I thought, oh my gosh, just a regular issue that residents have from time to time. So we, we want this part to be for them. So please, I ask you, if you're on the line, to talk about the pandemic and anything else that's on your mind on that, hold off if you can. And we'll go, Brian, go ahead and open it up for folks on citizens to be heard, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Eggers. At this time, if there are any members of the public online that wish to speak on the citizens to be heard item, please go ahead and hit star nine on your telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Commissioner Eggers, we do have one person that wishes to be heard. All I have is a first name. Oh, she just lowered her hand. I'm sorry. We don't have anybody that wishes to be heard on, on anything.
Okay, well, then we'll just skip on to number three and skip right over the state of local emergency. No kidding, of course. Well, that's fine. It just, this is an opportunity for, to hear from folks like that. So most of them that would probably want to speak are going to speak to the item number two. And we'll move on to item two, state of local emergency. Barry, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Just first, I wanted to acknowledge that Commissioner Seal was able to join us, so you can count her in to the attendance. So the local state of emergency, this would extend our local state of emergency from July 31st through August the 7th. As you know, we have to extend it every week per state law. And so we're still in the middle of obviously addressing that. You've heard on our calls on our, that the community partners, health department, medical professionals, hospitals, nursing homes, that are, they're working very well together. Some of the updates is Mahaffey test site continues to perform very, very well. That is in conjunction with the testing centers offered by community health centers, by Bay Care, our health department, and a number of pop-up sites within particular neighborhoods and within the community. The, however, because of the storm, that it will be suspended this Friday and Saturday at the, at the Mahaffey site because of pending storm. But they will be back up and running next week. And we will, we also have an announcement soon regarding the Bay Care site, but we move in it north. Details to follow. Pending that with questions, we certainly have Dr. Jamison and Dr. Cho on the line, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. Barry, is that closure a hard closure, even if the storm continues to track east?
I'm gonna, so I didn't have direct communication on that. Lourdes is on the line. If you can promote her, I'll let her answer that directly because she has the direct communication with them.
Okay.
Give me one minute. She's coming onto the panel now.
And the second question was just for Dr. Cho, if he could give us his seven-day average update stats.
Sure.
Okay. Lourdes, can you hear us okay? There she is.
Yes. Thanks for promoting me there. Yes, Commissioner, the state has asked us to close on Friday and Saturday. They partner with us on this site. They are very concerned about this storm. You know, if it completely went away, that's not what we're expecting. We just want to make sure that our residents and our staff are safe. So we will be closed on Friday and Saturday at Mahaffey.
All right. Thank you, Lourdes.
Okay. I can jump in. Just in terms of our numbers, some of our updates, as of today, we're at 16,119 cases cumulatively. Our seven-day rolling case count is at 256 daily. And our seven-day percent positivity is at 7%. Now, this is a huge improvement than what we've seen in the past few weeks. Just a few weeks ago, about three or four weeks ago, we were at 380 a day and 13% respectively. So we are making some positive strides and heading in the right direction. And what we are doing is truly working. However, we did see a slight uptick over the last few days, just like, and I certainly want us to keep on what we're doing, keep up with the social distancing, wearing the masks. And we certainly don't want to slide backwards. Now, we do, again, with our population, we do have a vulnerable population here in Pinellas County. We are up to 418 deaths, 18 more reported today. We have seen an overall increase in deaths over the last five to six weeks, although there has been an improvement in the weekly case count last week. 70% of our deaths have occurred over the, over that time span. The median age is 80, with 90% of deaths occurring in those older than 65. 65% of the deaths have occurred in the long-term care facility, which highlights the importance of continuing to work with those facilities. Now, in terms of the healthcare capacity, we have seen actually an improvement. The capacity and availability has remained stable. In terms of the COVIDs that are in hospital beds, we're, we're at 414, which is better than where we've seen it in the number of weeks. However, we are still seeing a good amount in the ICU as well as on vents with 90 COVID patients in the ICU here in Pinellas County and 46 on vents. As everyone's mentioned, we are fortunate here in Pinellas County to have this amazing community partnership, working well together with our healthcare partners and with our healthcare work group. We will continue to monitor the capacity, the staffing needs of the hospitals, the supply of those promising treatments, things that you've heard about, things like remdesivir, the convalescent plasma, the steroids, dexamethasone. And then through our long-term working groups, we're continuing to look for opportunities to expand things like our super sniffs, those dedicated COVID sites. And I think that's been going well. I'll end with, my staff came up with this phrase for some of the work we're doing at the health department. They called us the COVID warriors. Now, I would contend that we all need to be COVID warriors in the battle against this virus and really all do our part with social distancing and masking up. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cho. Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up and quote Dr. Cho from one of your eight o'clock meetings. Thank you indicated you thought the combination of the mask ordinance, the social distancing, and the bar regulation, really that combination is what's driving down the numbers. Is that still your feeling?
Yes. And so if you see, if you map out the seven-day rolling, you can see that spike spiked about like June 8th, and which is about two weeks from the institution of the mask ordinance, of the bar closures. And I think it also speaks to the adherence of our population to wear those masks and practice social distancing. But about two weeks, which is really an incubation period time for that virus, that's when we started to see that decline from that 13% positivity to 7% positive we are now.
Thanks so much, Dr. Cho. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Anybody else? It's Dr. Jamison. I know you're online. If you maybe could talk a little bit, just as you normally do again in the morning meetings, about the, more of the state of the hospitals and, and then maybe speak a little bit to some of the research that you're seeing about how this disease is going to be somewhat different than the flus, at least as you see it today, and how that is going to spike and ebb and flow kind of during the summer months and into the fall. But just maybe a comment on, on the epidemiological side of it, but after you maybe speak to the hospitals. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So yeah, the hospitals are continuing to have a good number of folks COVID positive in them, but it is better than it was a few weeks ago. That, that's clear. And so I think our healthcare providers and, and support folks have done just a great job over the last couple of weeks weathering this, this surge and taking good care of people along the way. We are seeing volumes drop down a little bit. I would note that I continue to see a trend of people putting off or avoiding healthcare because they're concerned about the risk of being in the hospital right now. I've had personally several patients who've put off seeking care for their heart attacks because they were worried about going to the hospital. And so I want to make sure that people know that the hospitals are doing everything they need to do to keep you safe and to not let you get COVID while you come to the hospital. If you're having a significant medical issue, we want you to feel comfortable to call 911 or access care at the hospital as you normally would. We are very concerned about the other impacts on the health of the community besides just directly from the virus. So, so I would say that overall, the hospitals are hanging in there. We have seen, I think, at least anecdotally, a significant increase in the number of folks who are sicker than normal coming into the ER and we're worried because we think they might be delaying coming. So we do want to get that message out that if you are really having a significant problem, don't hesitate, don't delay coming in. As far as the epidemiologic curve of the virus, I think there's growing consensus that this is going to behave exactly like previous coronaviruses and not so much like a flu virus, in that we should expect to continue to see a ongoing level of infection in the community with peaks and valleys. And that may have peaks and valleys locally. It may also have peaks and valleys regionally across the United States. And that seems to be the growing consensus of the epidemiologists.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. Jamison while he's unmuted? Okay. Thank you. Barry, is there anybody else that was planning to speak today before we take the action that we need?
Yes, I wanted, while we're on the state of emergency, I wanted Kathy Perkins to give you an update regarding the storm. Since this, since actually this will cover us during that time period, it kind of serves two purposes today. I failed to mention that when I, in my opening comments. But if Kathy would provide you just a brief update regarding her activities related to preparation.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you. So became, the system became a tropical storm last night. The name is a little hard to say, Isa Isa. So we are looking at the current timing for when we think the storm could potentially impact Pinellas County. So we could start to see winds on Saturday afternoon and then all the way through Sunday early morning. So the storm could sit over us for a while. This storm has shifted back and forth, the track, if you've watched it over the last couple of days, our probability for winds has come down a little bit, which is encouraging. But I would highly encourage people, I know a lot of people like to just look at that cone. Just a reminder, that cone only tells you where the center of the storm is, two-thirds of the time. And the winds for this storm extend out over 400 miles from the center of the storm. So even if it, if it continues that more easterly direction and stays off of the east coast of Florida, we still could have some wind and rain impacts. The good news is, if we are on the left side of the storm, we could be looking at lesser amounts of rain. So right now, they're predicting for us maybe about one and a half inches of rain. Again, some tropical storm force winds. In emergency management, we always like to prepare for less or higher impacts just in case. So our team has been having community meetings. We had our partner call yesterday. We'll have a partner call today and tomorrow. We are planning on having some at least minimal staffing in the EOC over the weekend. The CIC will also be open to take calls from the public. If we need to open up any shelters, we have been talking about contingencies for that. If we think we could have the high tropical storm force winds, then we could look at potentially opening a community center. If for some reason the storm was to escalate to a hurricane, we have that planned in place. And we've already been talking with our partners in, in relation to that as well. Public Works has already gone out to look at the usual spots for where there is flooding. The Booker Creek Tarpon Woods area is running a little bit higher than normal. So they are monitoring that. The good news is because we haven't had tons of rain recently, some of the levels are lower in certain areas. They will certainly monitor that. If they need to put pumps out there, they are prepared to do that. Pi is also looking at any impacts on their runways with any high tides or coastal inundation. We did look at the storm surge impacts, again, because this storm has shifted further east and because it is currently predicted to be a tropical storm. We're not expecting life-threatening storm surge in this area. We certainly could see some surge in our coastal areas of maybe one to two feet, but nothing life-threatening. So we'll continue to monitor this. At this point in time, we don't think there is a need to call for any evacuations. Certainly, if we think the winds will be high, we'll take into consideration our electric dependent and our folks that live in mobile homes for any additional actions that need to be taken. And with that, I'll open it for any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Long.
Thank you. My question relates to, in the past, we have used our, I think, our school personnel and our police officers to, to staff the, the facilities when we've had evacuations going on. And given the issues surrounding our kids going back to school, is that anything we need to worry about this year? I guess the question's probably for Barry.
Last night, Kathy, Lourdes, myself talked to Dr. Greco and Clint regarding this exact issue. So obviously, staffing during a pandemic is a concern. It's a concern for everybody. We're going to have to work together to talk about options and alternatives and, and the way we come together as a community to staff different scenarios. But yes, we're having active conversations about that very topic.
Okay. I'm very comforted knowing you're on it. So thank you.
Any, anybody else for Kathy? I don't, I don't see anybody else. Sheriff, just maybe you could comment real quickly. I've gotten a couple of calls from people really asking, not complaining, but asking about this, you know, compliance out at the bars and the, and that kind of thing. Just maybe a general comment. I know our CIC site, our communications site's not getting a lot of calls or complaints regarding, you know, situations. So just maybe you could touch on that for a minute.
Yeah, I mean, real simply, no issues. So, I mean, we're not getting calls and not getting complaints and not seeing anything. So all looks good to me.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Barry?
You have Commissioner Peters also that has a question.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Peters. I didn't, I can't see on the screen here.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a question that we haven't discussed before, but I've had several business owners contact me in the chamber. And I don't know what our role is, and I apologize. I didn't talk to Barry about this yesterday when we spoke. But many of the businesses got hit really hard. As you know, they were shut down and they're having a very difficult time paying their taxes on time, their property taxes. And so because they haven't been able to pay them on time, now they've been hit with a large fee. And so they owe even more money that they're having a difficult time paying the original money. And I was wondering if there's some kind of action we can take to maybe bring that next week, some kind of solution, either waiving the fee or delaying, delaying when they have to pay back before they have to do a fee. You know, I think our businesses have endured so much and, and so many of them are struggling really, really badly. And if we could possibly waive that fee or if there's something we can do to help those businesses so they're not penalized why they pay the taxes off in a, in a slower rate. Is there, you know, or come up with a payment plan for them that would help them maybe not have to have those fees. And so I, we've never, we've never discussed this before, but I can tell you right now that the people I've talked to are devastated. And and many of them are on the verge of bankruptcy at this point. And, and possibly they're, they're looking at, you know, four weeks maybe before they lose their business. And if there's something we can do to intervene to maybe make that less of a burden, you know, some of these businesses weren't eligible for cares. Some of these businesses weren't able to get the PPP. And, and I just think that it would be very helpful for us if we could assist them in this manner.
I will be happy to look into that. I, I will tell you that the methodology and the fees and the penalties and all that is contained in state statute, not in local county ordinance. So I would highly doubt that the commission has any authority because this is, those are, as you know, most of the taxes are not county taxes, but things like school board and other different entities. So I will certainly check into that. I'm seeing Don shake his head. So I'm assuming that I'm correct there. But those are mostly contained in state statute, not local authority.
So could we possibly send a letter to the governor asking if we could do some kind of, some kind of plan that would assist? If, if there's nothing we can do personally, can we at least send a letter to the governor's office requesting some kind of relief for these businesses and some kind of payment plan or something like that?
I think it's a great idea. I spoke with the apartment complex leaders or the, the association for apartments this week, and we kind of got into the same topic on late fees. In other words, people are behind on their rents and on top of the fact that they get hit with late fees. And so I challenged them about their late fees and they actually educated me to a point where they're not, they can make that decision individually and not, not charging late fees. And so they got, it's just, it's just adding more insult to injury. So, you know, if we can, if we can, I think it's a great idea to send a letter up there and just, maybe they're already thinking about it, assuming they've already thought about it. But, you know, what assuming does. So it'd be a good idea, I think, to send a letter with our concern on that. At least that's my thought.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I could be wrong, but I seem to recall that it's the state legislature that has authority over how these taxes are collected. And I think before we try to usurp them, we ought to, we ought to find out whose responsibility that is and work with the governing body. Because I, again, I could be wrong, but I don't know that that's a really super idea to try to go over the head of the legislature when we know it's a statutory issue. Just my opinion.
Yeah. Well, I, I never, I don't mind going over anybody's head regarding, regarding this, but I do agree, maybe we ought to find out where we need to go, whether it's the, you know, the leadership of the two chambers, whether it's, you know, the governor, whatever, wherever we can do to help out. I think it's a, I think that's the point that's being made. And I kind of support that point. Commissioner Peters, I didn't mean to cut you off a minute ago. Were you finished or?
Well, Commissioner Long just stated what I, obviously what I was trying to say is, Don, if you would please look into exactly that. And, and if we could do that within a, a week would be really helpful for these businesses. And if it's a letter to the governor, you know, I think he's the one that has the power and the authority to do this if we, but I want to make sure that we've explored every option, that if there's something at the local level we can do to assist them for some relief for some period of time, whatever that could be, I would really appreciate it. At least if you explore it. And if not, send a letter up to the governor to see if there's something that he can do to assist these businesses. Because I'm here to tell you, many of them are not going to make it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Peters. Don, did you have a comment? I'm sorry.
Just briefly, some of this has already been correctly stated by both Barry and other, some of you commissioners. This is a statutory as well as constitutional process for the collection of adblocker property tax. Obviously involves constitutional officers who do not have discretion in most of these things as well. They're purely ministerial stuff. The question that I think you've touched on is how much authority does the governor have under this emergency to supersede the statutory processes and, and to the extent that they bleed over into the constitution. But I can certainly help craft something for the chair to send up to, I would suggest the governor and maybe the House and Senate leaders as well.
Thanks, Don. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and that sounds pretty good, by the way.
Open up and hear from our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item number two, the local state of emergency, go ahead and raise your hand in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine if you're coming in on the telephone. And Mr. Chairman, it does appear we have two members of the public that wish to speak on this item. Our first speaker is Mr. Dave Waddell. Mr. Waddell, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. And welcome back.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, everybody. By the way, Brian, happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
Forty's not so bad. Honorable Chair of the Board of County Commissioners and Staff, thank you for the opportunity to be heard before you today. My name is David S. Waddell. I reside at 4835 164th Avenue, North Clearwater, Florida. I want to thank you guys for your fortitude and the great work you're doing. This is tough, but we have gained some ground. The statement that the Director of Emergency Management made that we prepare for the worst, we can't lose this ground. I don't want to see the businesses close back down. It appears the community is working in a civil way and respecting each other. But now is a time when we're still this close to the line, where we need to be proactive and think ahead. I haven't really heard any discussion about a regional approach. I'm wondering if that's come up and we are working with the surrounding counties. And as far as contact tracing goes, well, if we get down low enough again where we can maybe manage this, I know that the response from a lot of people that are being contacted is they, they don't want to participate. And that's critical because it's a link in a chain. And if we lose one, there could be potentially 10 others that are walking around and not aware that they've been exposed. I brought up also before, and I want to thank Commissioner Eggers on the mandatory reporting by businesses that have a employee that tests positive and that the necessary contact tracing take place. Having that be volunteer, voluntarily done, I think just leads Having that be volunteer voluntarily done, I think just leads us wide open to too many variables. But I again appreciate all the hard work you've done. And I want, I want to say thank you, Commissioner Eggers, for opening up with a spiritual statement. If our county ever needed it, it's now more than ever. And please, citizens of Pinellas County, bear with the board. Let's work together so we don't have to start over again. The ground game that we have is so important and that we need to think ahead. And I mean, three, four, five, six months out, you know? The school thing, that's a whole nother issue. I really don't know what to think or say about that. But I do know that ventilation systems in a lot of these buildings, and I'm not just talking schools or government buildings, but buildings in general, a lot of these ventilation systems are antiquated. And we, we really don't have a great understanding as to this virus. But the more activity within a building, it's like reloading a gun. And this stuff gets in the ventilation system if they don't have the required HEPA. Or, and I'm, and I'm almost certain, I, probably the health department would be able to answer that. But I think there is a HEPA requirement, but there is no UV requirement. And that ultraviolet light is certain, and we used it in the military, is certain, and this is back in the eighties, all right?
Hey, David, hey, Dave, you're, you're on borrowed time, but go ahead and wrap up your thought, wrap up your thought there, okay?
Oh, no, I, 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 I'm just thinking that we need to, you know, take this time and the ground we've gained and, and make the most of it. And thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, David. And I think that's what Dr. Cho was saying as well. So appreciate your comments. Go ahead, Brian.
All right, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Don. I do not have a last name. So Don, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, and you'll have three minutes to address our board.
Yes, good morning. My name is Dawn Bowler. B is in boy, O H L E R. Address is 6678 54th Avenue North, St. Petersburg. Um, I'm going to be honest, I'm getting very frustrated and I'm getting very angry. And I don't think I stand alone in that. I got an email from my gym of a new wear at all times mask mandate. When directly on the CDC site, it states fact, people should not wear masks while exercising. Sweat can make the mask become wet more quickly, which makes it difficult to breathe and promotes the growth of microorganisms. Do you care about this health threat? A 2015 study from University of South Wales states the widespread use of cloth masks by healthcare workers may actually put them at increased risk, increased risk of respiratory illness and viral infections. And their global use should be discouraged. Heaven forbid you talk about boosting the immune system or personal responsibility over taking care of one's health. Now, I can't wear a mask. I try, but I always have to take it off. I have extreme claustrophobia and PTSD due to being a survivor of domestic violence, rape and multiple sexual assaults throughout my life, dating back to as a child. I've been forced into unemployment because of the mask mandate. Now I have apprehensions even attempting to not wear a mask because of the level of threat that is happening against those that can't wear one. I have experienced it and even my husband found himself in a situation the night, night before last night, and he was wearing a mask. All you have to do is Google assaults on individuals over masks. And there are pages of stories of harms to individuals over the use or non-use of masks. Commissioner Eggers, I believe it was you that said two weeks ago, you were not exempt from the ordinance. Yet you were all indoors with more than 10 people and the majority of you did not wear a mask. Commissioner Gerard, you took yours off and you were playing with it, which completely contaminated thing. And then you put it back on your face. You have proved that do as I say and not as I do. Lastly, when it comes to public safety, let's go back about seven years. When I pleaded with you for an entire year about the pit bull attack on my daughter and the continuous near attacks that followed on my family and our neighbors. I was advised to move. I was advised to do what I had to do to keep my family safe. There was no responsibility whatsoever placed on the dog owners over our safety and the surrounding neighbors were affected. In fact, I was even told at one point that dog owners have rights. You made it very clear that our safety was our responsibility. And now you want to sit here and tell us that we're responsible for everyone around us? You keep moving the goalposts and it doesn't fly. Enough is enough. We have the right to choice. And the right of physical safety too. By removing the right of choice, you just enabled a whole new level of public safety and livelihood concerns. And it is high time that the right of choice is given back to us.
Thank you, Don.
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Orlando Acosta. Mr. Acosta, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling and address, and you'll have three minutes to address our board.
All right, thank you. This is Orlando Acosta. That's A C O S T A. I'm at 1155 53rd Avenue North, St. Petersburg, 33703.
Thank you.
I want to again thank the commission for establishing the COVID-19 testing site at the Mahaffey. Just to share my observation and no way to complain. But just as an anecdote, our family of five received results from between 48 hours to our, our last one, two weeks and still counting. We've all been negative so far. So still, thank you again for setting up that site. I support the commission extending the state of emergency and in placing public safety in its proper place above individual rights. Given Dr. Jamison's warning that this virus will be with us for an indefinite period of time. I believe we should be considering changing the mask mandate to something more permanent, lest the sense of emergency loses effect. Mask use proven so effective here in Pinellas is part of our future. And however we can make it part of our social culture will diminish the risk of virus outbreaks and reduce the severity when they do happen. Perhaps Dr. Jamison could help us by suggesting other counties in the state or country that might be providing, that could provide a blueprint on how to successfully change the way we live and play so that we can achieve a resurgence in our economic and school lives and maintain them in the long term. Regarding school, while I know the commission has no say in how we go about doing that. With political leadership in Washington and Tallahassee, having put a gun to our heads as parents and teachers to reopen the schools. I believe we still can be further motivated to continue the mask mandate indefinitely in some form. And to collaborate with the school board and providing safe spaces into which to expand classes and improve social distancing for students and teachers alike. These spaces may be indoors or outdoors, and it may require support from county staff and maybe the sheriff's department. If this has been considered before, I suggest we revisit the issue on a regular basis. We all truly want our children to return to school in person, but we want to do so safely. And with that, commissioners, thank you very much for your time and thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you, Orlando.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Amy Wright. Ms. Wright, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hi, my name is Amy Wright. That's W R I G H county. I'm just calling because, you know, of course I want to extend the emergency plan. My husband is a COVID survivor. He was diagnosed back in May, probably like, and he's been recovered for like over a month. And yesterday we checked him into the ER. This virus is not a joke. Even mild cases like my husband's will have lasting effects months after COVID recovery. He's being sent to a cardiologist because he might have heart damage due to the virus. And he did not have to be hospitalized when he first was diagnosed. Like this is something new. And I just don't think that anyone calling in asking to like remove mask mandates understands what the effect of this virus is. Like he's 26 years old. He's not, he's not old. He's not, he's not immune compromised. He's a young, fit guy and he is being sent to specialists to have like an ultrasound on his heart all after this virus. So I think it's just, I think you guys need to take it seriously because this is something that the public has no knowledge of. We're not even talking about the, the long lasting impact it has on people who've recovered from mild cases. And so, you know, until you've actually had some of your family go through this, you know, you really don't have a right to make decisions for public health on other people because, you know, like my husband, a young, thick guy. That's majority of what the people are saying. Like he didn't die from the virus. He didn't even need to be hospitalized. But now we are facing medical issues that surpass what the virus, you know, originally was. And that is just, that's something that no one can foresee, that we don't know what's going to happen later on in the future. He could have heart damage that is going to cause like cardiac issues for the rest of his life, all because he caught it when he was going to work. And he works in the medical field and he was at high risk. But like, that doesn't mean that like someone like his life is not valued for what he has done. And he shouldn't have to risk getting it again in a more severe, a serious case because others won't take others' public health at consideration. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Amy, thank you for that. Our prayers are with you and your husband. Yeah, I think that's one of the things that the, the doctors have been telling us is that there's more that we don't know about this disease than what we do know. And so things are evolving weekly or daily, I guess, on, on research and things like that. So there's still things that we, we'll, we'll find out more about as time goes on. Brian, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one remaining speaker. I only have a first name. It's Jane. So if Jane, you'll go ahead and unmute and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, and you'll have three minutes to address our board.
Hello, my name's Jane. I live in Pinellas County. Masks either work or they don't, six feet or they don't. You guys, if this was so dangerous, what, why, where are the hazmat bins for disposal? Because every day I'm out and I see masks and gloves all over the ground. Who's picking those up? If, if this virus is so dangerous and so contagious, why are they on the ground? Where's the hazmat bins to put them in? If it's so contagious and dangerous, why is it that we can go to a restaurant and put our dirty masks on the table, eat our food, then put it back on? I would think that with the AC units, all that is flying around in the air. So everybody has already, you know, been affected. And just to make my point, I have never, ever been tested for COVID. And three days ago, I got a nice little phone call telling me I was positive. Care to explain how that happens, that nobody ever had a test? And we're being told we're positive? No, thanks. I think it's time that you put it back in our own control to either mask up or not mask up. Stay home, don't stay home, but you need to open our bars and our businesses. All the other big box stores, nobody seems to be having an issue there. So if they can be open, our small businesses can be open. And I think it's time. You can't keep dragging this out week by week by week and expect that this economy is ever, ever going to bounce back because it's not. You're destroying us. All the small businesses cannot possibly recover. They can't. And all the care's money in the world, all the stimulus monies from the Senate and the government isn't going to fix it. It just isn't. It's time to move on. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Jane, for the board record, can you, we get your last name, please?
Smith.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jane.
Mr. Chair, we do have one other hand that went up. We have Yvette who also wishes to speak. Yvette, if you go ahead and unmute yourself because your first, last name's spelling and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, my name's Yvette God, 9371 Blind Pass Road, St. Pete Beach, Florida, 33706.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I want to ask for you not to extend the mask mandate. And there's a lot of reasons. And, and what I'm hearing a lot is the, the number of cases. And I'm never, I'm 54 years old. And for you guys to be recruiting healthy people to take this test, I mean, you didn't do it with the flu. And I, you know, I spend a lot of time working out, exercising, and I understand that young people can get a virus. I had mold last year and I got that. But for you guys to mandate it and not make it up to us and in our individual liberties to choose whether or not we want to wear a mask is absolutely appalling to me. And again, back to the doctors who never talk about building the immune system, making your immune system stronger so that you can handle when you do get a virus. Shame on you. Shame on you doctors for not talking about the other causes of death. Because, you know, the cure is better than the, the cure is going to be worse than disease. This is true. The number of child abuse cases, the desensitation is going on with our children and not sending them back to school and missing important things. There's not been one case in the world where a student going back to school has affected another teacher. They do not carry the virus. The death rate has gone down, but no one does not want to talk about that. And I've done the numbers off the CDC. We have less deaths per week in 2020 than we did in 2017, 2018 and 2019. All you got to do is do the math. Less deaths per week. I need that to sink in for you guys. And the number of the, the, the other alterations, so heart disease, heart disease is down, right? Why? Because people are afraid to go to the doctor. So if you take a look at total deaths, 9% of the deaths for 2020, what happened to the 131 million other people who died or 1.3 million people that have died in the United States? Nobody talks about that. 9% is because, because of this virus. And that's what it is every year with the flu. So let's put things into perspective and not mandate masks and allow it to be our choice and let everybody take their personal responsibility. If they're sick, wear a mask. If they're not, if they're sick, stay home, right? And if you don't, don't ask me to wear a mask because I'm not carrying the virus and it's not asymptomatic. There have been two studies out, but probably more than that, that show that asymptomatic cases are not a thing. So again, please do not vote and look at the numbers. And doctors, please start talking about telling people to take care of their health. And yes, hydrochloroquine, and yes, zinc, and yes, all these things have been touted to help us, they help. And some of you guys have already made up your mind before you even heard anything that any of us have to say. I know that. But y'all need to wake up because this is affecting our business people. People are losing their lives because of other altercations. So that's it for me. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you, Yvette.
And Mr. Chair, we do have one other hand that went up. Ms. Karen Mullins. Ms. Mullins, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last names, spelling and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, everybody. Karen Mullins, M U L L I N S, Dunedin, Florida. I want to thank you for listening to science and not pseudoscience that came out over the last weekend. There are so many people that are ill right now who have this. Personally, I've had a friend die. I've been affected by this personally. Right now I have to go down because I've got something going on. I'm worried that it is COVID, may not be. But I have to go down and get tested today. There are people out there, and I don't know if the previous caller realized this, this or not, but there are illnesses that one gets that we don't know how they get it, but they are autoimmune deficient and has nothing to do with getting vitamin C, fighting off viruses or going out and exercising. There is nothing that you can do about having these diseases other than to treat the, the, the symptoms. I'd like to say thank you for following the science again and thank you for your leadership. I have a good day.
Thanks, Karen.
And Mr. Chairman, there are no other members of the public that wish to be heard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian. I don't know if anybody had any other comments to make before we go ahead and take a motion for this. Okay, I don't see.
Mother approval, Mr. Chair.
Second. Thank you. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to item number three, which is use of force investigation presentation. Barry?
Yes, the sheriff is on the line. So Brian, if you promote the sheriff and, oh, he's up. I think you have a presentation. He can provide you an update regarding the use of force investigation process.
Hi, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. I was asked to give you all an overview of something we announced last week. It is a pretty dramatic change in how we're going to conduct use of force investigations by law enforcement officers in Pinellas County when they use deadly force or force that is non-lethal, non-deadly, but it results in death or serious bodily injury. So I give you an overview of it, but I want to just kind of lay some background for this. Is, is that whenever anybody, it doesn't matter who it is, uses deadly force or force results in death or serious bodily injury, it requires that there be an investigation, a criminal investigation, a homicide investigation. So let's differentiate between a homicide investigation and a murder investigation. So let's differentiate between a homicide investigation and a murder investigation. All homicides are not murders. Is that there can be force that's used that results in the killing of one person by another, and that's a homicide. But it's lawful and it's justifiable, or it's excusable, or there are a number of other frameworks under the law that don't make it a murder. So what we're talking about here is, is that a criminal investigation has to be conducted. And how that has been done in Pinellas County is for the last close to forty years that I know of is the same way that it's been done in many places across the state of Florida and the same way it's done in many places across the United States. So the model we've used here is a consistent model that has been used for a very, very long period of time. And also knowing that the model that we used has worked. And it is not being changed because anybody is calling into question what's being done is made any accusations of any impropriety, has said that it's not being done correctly. It's being changed because we recognize that we are living in different times and we need to evaluate and self-evaluate and make sure that not only what we are doing is correct, but it's also accepted and believed to be by, correct by the consumers of it, the recipients of it, and that's the public. So we want to make sure that we're doing this in the right way. So how it's worked over the last four decades in Pinellas County that I'm aware of is that when a law enforcement officer from the sheriff's office, a sheriff's deputy, or a city police officer used deadly force, the investigation, the criminal investigation, the homicide investigation has been conducted by the agency that employs the officer or deputy. Now, this is in conjunction with the parallel, but also independent investigation conducted by the state attorney. So the law enforcement agency that employs the officer or deputy conducts, with their homicide unit, conducts the criminal investigation. The state attorney conducts his independent but parallel investigation and decisions are reached. And I can tell you that I know for the last thirty-eight years plus that we have conducted these investigations in a proper, a thorough, and an objective manner. But as I said a minute ago, I don't know if that matters anymore. It doesn't matter as much that it's being done right, which it does matter, but, but what's more important these days is, is that people accept it and they believe in it and they believe in the outcome. So I think we have evidence that we've done it right. Unfortunately, about five years ago, we had a deputy sheriff down in Madeira Beach that shot a person. And we determined that it was not only against policy and inconsistent with training, but his actions when he shot that person were unlawful. And we ended up criminally charging that deputy sheriff with attempted manslaughter. So as they say, the proof's in the pudding. We have done these in the right way. We've done them thoroughly. We've done them objectively, and we've made hard calls. And that's a hard call when you decide to arrest one of your own deputies who uses deadly force in the course of their employment. But it was wrong and it was unlawful. And he was criminally charged and adjudicated properly throughout, through the criminal justice system. So anyway, that's kind of the backdrop of it. And in seeing where we are, I had a discussion with the police chiefs and suggested to them that we changed the model. We all agreed that we should change the model and we have formed the Pinellas County Use of Deadly Force Task Force. And so what will happen under the task force is, is that the sheriff's office will contribute three experienced homicide detectives. The St. Petersburg Police Department will contribute three, Clearwater Police Department, three, and Pinellas Park, one. And these experienced homicide investigators will be the ones who are responsible for conducting these criminal investigations when a deputy sheriff or a police officer in Pinellas County uses deadly force or that force that results in death or serious bodily injury. But who will be excluded from the investigation and excluded from the task force's work will be the agency employing that officer or deputy. So as an example, if we have a deputy sheriff who uses deadly force down in the Wellman area, then the lead agency in that will be the St. Petersburg Police Department and the St. Petersburg Police Chief will have command of the investigation. If it's an incident that occurs north of Almerton Road, let's say it happens in Palm Harbor, then it'll be the Clearwater Police Chief and the Clearwater Police Department will take the lead with all the other task force members, but to the exclusion of anybody, including me, participating from the sheriff's office. Whoever the agency head is will have full and independent authority to conduct that investigation and make any decisions, including charging decisions. If it is a shooting that happens in the city of St. Petersburg involving a St. Petersburg police officer, then the sheriff will be responsible for it. And the same thing applies in the city of Clearwater or in the city of Pinellas Park. Some of the smaller agencies in Pinellas County are also participating in that we will conduct those investigations in those cities like Indian Shores and Treasure Island and Gulfport, some of the others. But they are not contributing an investigator to the task force because they don't have the people with that long-term experienced homicide investigation background. So there will be participation throughout the county, but the task force itself, itself will be comprised by the agencies that I told you about. We're in the process now of putting together a manual so that the investigations are conducted consistently. But we believe again that by getting out ahead of this, that we will add that additional layer of independence, of objectivity, and that the agency that is employing the officer or deputy use force, it's important that they not be involved in it. And it just takes it above reproach. It takes any concerns that people may have about the outcome out of it. And this is again, still in addition to the investigation that's being conducted by the state attorney. So nothing changes with that. So that's kind of an overview of it. But as I said, the reason behind it is, is that we thought that even after all these years and that being done right and being done correctly and that there's evidence and proof of that, that we need to continue to look at what we're doing and how we're doing it and try and do it in a, in a better way. And what is important to all of us, important to me and important to the police chiefs, that when we make a determination, that it be right and it be correct and it also be received and accepted by the community is being right and correct. Because we can be right all day long, but if people don't have confidence in that decision and that determination and that it was conducted objectively fairly, and there are people, and I see it, that would have concern about me making a determination about one of our deputies, the St. Petersburg Police Chief making a determination about one of his officers, et cetera. And so let's take that off the table. Let's not even allow that to be an issue. And I can tell you that it's a big deal because this is really a seismic shift. And what we've all decided to do by this written agreement is really subordinate ourselves and our officers and deputies to decision-making by an outside agency and an outside entity. And that is a big deal, but it's necessary and it's a good thing. So it's something that we just want to get out ahead of before we don't have any problems. And it's all being done in the name of making sure that we don't have any problems or issues. So that gives you, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has, but again, this is in place. It was effective when we announced it a week or so ago. And I'm confident it's the right thing to do.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Bob, for that presentation and continue to be really proud of your work and the other chiefs that are, that are at the table with this. I think it's, you're right. It is a different day. And we have to be responsive in a positive way. Commissioner Long, I saw your hand go up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very quick because I know Commissioner Welch wants chat as well. Sheriff, I want to just thoroughly applaud your efforts and your sensitivity to the issues of our time. I think it's a very well-thought-through plan, and I couldn't be more proud of your ability to collaborate and get all of the rest of the law enforcement community on board. My question to you is, have you thought of the unintended consequences of when, because given the time that this will be in effect, you get a response from your outside entities that you totally, totally disagree with? Any thoughts about how you will handle that?
It's their decision. So if I understand your question, Commissioner, let's say as an example, let's use this as an example. Let's say a deputy sheriff uses deadly force. The homicide investigation is being conducted, and let's just say hypothetically by Chief Holloway and the St. Petersburg Police Department is leading it along with the other members of the task force from Clearwater and from Pinellas Park. But he's the lead and he makes a decision. His decision stands. And remember that he's conducting a criminal investigation. I have all the confidence in the world in his ability and that of these task force members to make the right decision. What they're investigating is the law and the criminal law of the state of Florida to the facts. They're not investigating whether the deputy acted within policy, because that's a different investigation. And it's two different things. So he's simply applying the law to the facts, but if he applies the law to the facts and he thinks that there was a violation of criminal law, then he has the authority to act on that and take whatever actions appropriate, as it would be with any criminal case. And let's just say hypothetically, he decided to act and he felt that that be violated the criminal laws. He decided to make an arrest. That would certainly be within his right and his prerogative. I don't have any say in I'm ceding that authority, as he is with me, if it involved a St. Petersburg officer. But ultimately, the ultimate charging decision, and this is why we have layers within our system of justice and within the criminal justice system, is that the ultimate charging authority is with the state attorney. So there is a later review and that review and next step wouldn't come to me because I'm out of it. As he's out of it and his chief slaughters out of it and everybody else is. The next layer of review would be, as it is for any other citizen, would be with the state attorney. And the state attorney that makes his decision. But as we know, then the next layer of review goes into the courts and ultimately it could be with a jury. So you know, the answer to your question is, is that, you know, it, it doesn't matter what I think. Because I've ceded that authority to somebody else in these circumstances. And I'm not even gonna really be, I'm not gonna wanna be, not really. I want to be clear about this. I'm not gonna be privy to the investigation until it's done, as far as whatever their determination is. So you know, we're all been very clear with this. We're all committed to it. It's totally objective. And when somebody else is handling it, because it's one of our people, we're staying out of it.
Well, thank you for that very thoughtful response. Again, I applaud your leadership and your thoughtfulness in terms of how you've addressed it. So good job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Commissioner Welch, you're muted, sir.
I'm playing Dave Eggers today since he's I just wanted to thank the sheriff for, for taking some time. I thought it was important that we talk about what's happening in our county. You know, there's such a void out there and I know that we've all been eager to get to a dialogue, you know, pass the protests and get to dialogue and, and policy changes. I know Commissioner Long had a memo early on in the process. Mayor Hibbard, Mayor Christman is working. I know the sheriff is working to try to get together with community folks and hear their perspective, but a couple of things have blocked that, COVID being one of them. And, and getting, you know, a list of priorities from the various groups that are out there. But I think it's important that we talk about what is happening. And as the sheriff, I think, said in his press conference, we're not waiting to, you know, make positive changes. And I think what he laid out is a very positive change. And as, you know, the sheriff said, community perception is very important. And although we have a great county, I know there are areas where we can be better countywide. And so I just wanted to give the sheriff an opportunity to talk about what's happened. Thank Sheriff Gerard for putting this on. So just to recap a couple of things that have happened since the, the George Floyd protest started. The commission asked for a review of use of force policies countywide. The police agencies were actually already working on that. Sorry, that's what happens when you get phone calls on your iPad. Can y'all still see me?
Yes.
Most of the agencies talked about where they are in terms of eight can't wait compliance. City of St. Pete has reallocated some funds to deal with certain calls in a different way. And now the sheriff working with our police agencies have rolled out this Use of Deadly Force Task Force. So those are some important, I think, progressive changes that are happening in our community even before a real substantive dialogue happens. And I just thought it'd be worth a few minutes to talk about that. So Sheriff, thank you for taking the time to come and talk about it. And thank you for your initiative on, on making these changes happen.
You're welcome, Commissioner. You know, thanks for the opportunity to do so. And I just want to tell you and tell the other commissioners and anybody listening is, is that I can tell you that this isn't the end, is that it's the beginning. And that we are continuing to look at different things that we're doing and different ways we do things and different opportunities to change. I, I, I know, and I believe that law enforcement in this county overall, and I'm not gonna say it's perfect because it's not, nothing is. Is, is that, you know, and, and every place has its problems and its bad apples, but they are anomalies. They truly are. But that doesn't mean that we're not looking for ways to be better, as, you know, some people have said in the past and used the phrase, you don't have to be sick to get better. And I think that's true, is, is that we, but, but overarching all of this right now is, is that we have to do things that ensure the community trust, that people accept and that they believe, and they're not left with questioning. And that's what I think that we need to strive for and we need to do everything we can to eliminate. There's substantive things, but there's also perception things. And again, we all know the adage perception's reality, and it couldn't be more true in this case and in this situation, that we need to be respectful of that and responsive to it. So that when people hear something, it doesn't automatically, what I want is when people hear something is that their first response is, is that, okay, we, we get it, we're accepting it. Their first response isn't, oh my God, we gotta question this because, you know, we don't have confidence in it. We're looking at some other things. One of the things, and I know you all have a lot of other business here today, but we're on this topic overall, Commissioner, you raised as far as some of these reforms. And some of these things were changing. And I've had some discussions with some of you about this, is, is that this whole issue and this whole notion is coming up in Clearwater, it's coming up in different places about videotaping and audiotaping and you know, people shorthand and talk about body cameras. You know, and, you know, people say that I'm quote, opposed to them. And, and that's not, not accurate. I'm not opposed to them. Okay? Is, is that there's a difference between being opposed and not being supportive of one particular device. We have five-hundred-and-sixty patrol cars. Five-hundred-and-sixty patrol cars with every single one of them is equipped with a camera system and an audio system. Every single deputy is wearing a microphone pack. And, and think about this number, and I'm gonna say it twice. We are downloading on a monthly basis, monthly basis, seventeen thousand video events a month. Seventeen thousand video events a month. Every single traffic stop, every single deputy encounter with a citizen on the street. We record a lot. And there may be ways to look at some options to enhance that. But I'm not gonna get all into it here, but I want you all to know, because I've had some individual discussions, that we are doing, we are doing what, and I'm not throwing them under the bus, they know this. And when there's talks in these other cities, St. Petersburg Police Department doesn't have dash cameras, Clearwater Police Department doesn't have dash cameras, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office doesn't have dash cameras, all these other agencies that are talking about going to these video systems. That's because they're doing zero. Okay? They're not doing anything. And we are doing a lot. We're downloading seventeen thousand video events a month of deputy contact with people. So we're doing a lot in that area and they're all wearing mic packs and we're capturing audio. So we will continue to look at different ways, as I just said. But this whole notion that the, the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office isn't doing all, isn't capturing video, is just wrong. And I really want to make sure that you all understand that we will continue to look for ways and continue to look for ways to do what is right, and that is, is to use technology, especially to gain evidence. And I'm gonna leave it that body cameras in and of themselves, body cameras are not a panacea. Nothing's a panacea. And so, but we are already doing a lot, a lot of video recording. When you're downloading seventeen thousand video events a month of deputy contact with citizens and every traffic stops being captured, all these citizen encounters are being captured. We're already doing exponentially more than any other agency in the county. So I'll leave that issue there. We can talk about it some other time in the future, but I, I'm gonna get some information out on that because people need to know that.
Thank you, Sheriff. That's, that's a great point. Commissioner Welch, yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to follow up on that. And Sheriff, you know, I've always appreciated you being straightforward. And I'm glad you brought up the camera issue because that is gonna be one of the big topics of discussion going forward. In fact, when you look at the eight can't wait, I think most of those issues are covered, you know, like banning chokeholds and, you know, stepping forward and intervening. But as you laid it out, the cameras and then the civilian review, those are the two things that I think are gonna be the issue of dialogue in the future. And so I'm glad you're, you stated what you stated about what you're doing with cameras now. And I'm glad you're open to discussing that in the future. But those are the two outstanding issues that I think we're gonna be talking about going forward. But those are the two outstanding issues that I think we're going to be talking about going forward.
Yeah, Commissioner Welch, I think it's a good point. And I do think also some of the decisions that are being made now, I hope that they continue to be scrutinized going forward. I mean, I, you know, you, you hear a lot of noise with regard to the policy that the police department in St. Petersburg has done. Good, mostly good, but some people wondering and concerned about the encounter and is it going to be safe enough for our first responders to answer? So there's a, there's a lot of questions out there, it's how it's going to be implemented. And I think as long as everybody has a residence safety in mind, as we go forward, we continue to scrutinize and we continue to improve. I mean, a system that's changing now, some people are for it, some people are questioning it. But as we go forward, we've got to be willing and to have the conversation, to continue trying to improve things every time we make a decision. Sometimes they're not the right ones and we have to adjust it a little bit. So there's a lot on the table right now. And I think to your point, Commissioner Welch, we're going to have a lot of community dialogue, I hope, going forward, so we can engage our residents in something that I know people feel passionately about. So Commissioner Long, you had a comment?
Commissioner Long, you'll have to unmute, I'm sorry.
Not so much a comment, Commissioner, Mr. Chair. It's a question for the sheriff. And having been serving on the BTS board along with Commissioner Welch, I know that every time someone comes forward with a great idea that embraces new and ever evolving technology, there's an enormous cost that usually goes along with that. And so my question is, given that you have 500 patrol cars on the streets and the number of sworn officers that are working, have you done any kind of an analysis to determine if you were to go to body cameras and or consider them, what the impact would be on your budget?
Yes, we have. At, at, at a minimum, it would be, it would be over $3 million. And that's at a minimal, so it's significant and it has to be weighed. You know, it, it has to be considered. There has to be a cost benefit analysis to it, considering with what we're already doing. But, you know, it also doesn't have to be all or nothing either. There's, you know, when people are talking about body cameras, I, you know, is that what some people who are calling them, people are calling for them or calling for them for the purpose of is oversight. And if it doesn't happen on video, I don't believe it. And in order to trust cops, they have to wear a body camera from the time that they begin their shift to the time they end their shift. That's never going to happen and it shouldn't happen. You know, there's a lot of privacy concerns, there's a lot of operational concerns, there's a lot of capacity concerns. But there's also different ways to implement additional technology that would capture serious incidents. There's gun mounted cameras, there's gun activated cameras, there's, there's all kinds of different things and we already have. And this is where people say, well, you're opposed to this and opposed to that. I have people in here in our office two years ago, two years ago, doing demonstrations for us on body worn cameras that were gun activated. And the systems weren't developed then, they didn't work then. So, you know, this is something we will continue to look at, we'll continue to explore. But direct answer to your question is, is that we've looked at it and it would be at a minimum, just to implement, it would be over $3 million, which is substantial. And on top of that, we have right now, and so I just told you, we download 17,000 video events a month. We right now in the Penous County Sheriff's Office have five people dedicated to doing nothing other than processing public records requests. If we took all of those deputies and we added all these body cameras and we added all that additional video, you're looking at also on top of that, you're looking at a substantial number of new positions just to be able to manage all that video and process all those public records requests. So there's a lot of considerations and a lot of collateral considerations with it. Beyond just, oh, just put a body camera on every cop. It is not that simple. And the privacy considerations are also substantial. You know, if a cop's in your house taking a video or in your business, or when you're interviewing sexual battery victims, there's all kinds of things. And, you know, we can have that discussion, but I just wanted to make sure and I appreciate the opportunity to get that out there so that people know. Because, you know, we talked about this last time about there's so many things going on. There really are that people don't know about. And we've got to do a better job of educating the public and educating everybody about the things we're already doing. And, you know, I hope when people hear that the Penous County Sheriff's Office has been a leader in videotaping and audiotaping events and having the deputies capture that. When the other agencies in the county, and I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, those are their choices. But they're doing nothing and we've been doing this and I'm the one that implemented mandatory in all cruisers. And we've been doing that for about seven years now and we've downloaded over a million video events. So I'd say just the opposite as far as being opposed to it, we've been a leader in doing it. And more so than anybody else.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else, any other comments or questions for the sheriff? I, I don't see the whole board, but I'm not hearing anybody. So I don't think we have any, we're not taking any votes, that was just informational as a part of our workshop. Barry, did you have anything else on that, on that item?
No, this was just a presentation from the sheriff. If no other questions, we can.
We'll move on to item four, which is our Duke Energy Florida Clean Energy Connection Program.
Correct, and this is, this one's interesting and you haven't heard from Hank in a while. He, but it doesn't mean that he hasn't been doing anything. He's bringing forward a program that he's going to outline and get consensus about participating. So without stealing his thunder, I'll turn it over to Hank.
Good morning. Thanks Barry. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Happy to present to you this morning, an exciting opportunity to essentially offset some of our energy use through Duke's new community or Clean Energy Connection Program, which is essentially a community solar program. So Duke has rolled out this new program to allow voluntary subscription into purchasing solar energy that's going to be built in the next four years, three to four years to cover its entire service area. It's going to enable qualified customers to participate and directly fund the development of the program. And in return, we get a credit for the fees that we pay into the program. Staff has done an internal analysis on our energy usage so far. And according to our analysis, to Duke's numbers and other research out there, this looks like somewhat of a win-win of a program. We're expecting a return between five to seven years subscribing into it. There's no new contract needed to subscribe, subscribe to this program now. But we do need to make a commit, commitment and apply with our desired subscription size. I will say that Duke is setting aside 10% of their total, total solar capacity for municipal governments. And they're expecting an over subscription of that 10%. So whatever we subscribe will get rolled back and that's going to be done equitably along amongst local governments. There's going to be a significant offset of the credit that's going to be applied directly on a monthly invoice. So whatever we pay into, we're going to get back directly. And according to their calculators, within five years, we'll get, we'll get payback directly within that annual year and then cumulatively that will come in seven years. Fees aren't going to be expended until 2020 when the program comes online. That is actually when we're going to enter into contracts with Duke for the program. Right now, we're just making a commitment. And so we wanted to present this opportunity to you today. We're going to, we're keep, we're going to continue to do our due diligence on the program, what the procurement implications are, the financial implications, you know, monetarily, as well as the environmental benefits and how it helps us set up to become more sustainable and resilient as, as an organization. We're, we want to come back to you with a full presentation at a later date when we know what our subscription size is going to be. Because right now, those numbers are really in flux. We can apply for 100% of our electric, electricity usage right now. But we're going to get rolled back just because there's going to be over subscription of the program. Additionally, Duke is still waiting for the Public Service Commission to approve the program as they just filed early, earlier this month. And so right now, we're coming to you to request authorization for the administrator to pursue enrollment into the program. And, you know, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Just a little follow on commissioners, as you know, with Duke, with Duke, they're a monopoly. We can't go out on the open market to procure green energy. This is a unique opportunity that we have. I am concerned because we don't have the rates at this point. That's the reason Hank kind of gave you that tidbit at the end that we're going to come back. Devil's in the detail, obviously, that won't be ready until next year. But we're opting in, we can always pull back out if we find that the cost benefit isn't there at a later time. But, you know, you've, you've certainly made your commitment to green energy and sustainability. And so this is one of the few opportunities with energy that we have to do that. That's the reason we're bringing it here today. I don't, don't need, we can ask and answer any questions. Don't need a formal vote, just want consensus of the, at the board agrees that in fact, this is worthy of pursuing.
Commissioner Welch.
Thank you. I guess I don't need to disclose that I'm former Duke. I don't see Jill. Well, that was a while ago. But it's interesting, I went out and tried to understand what they're doing. And I noticed up in North Carolina, they've got different facets. They've got a solar rebate program that helps folks actually put the equipment on their site. And they've got a green source advantage program for larger customers. I guess what I'm, the word subscription is what I'm struggling with. Do we have any equity in the solar system down the line? Or are we simply helping Duke to finance solar?
Great question. Hank?
From what I understand, we do not have equity in the actual solar fields or plants, if you will. These fees will go towards the development and operation of those plants itself. We will receive what's termed a renewable energy credit. And so we will get that credit for solar production. But we're not getting equity or individual stake in, I guess, the plants themselves. And I say plants, they're planning to build 10 different, 10 different solar farms around the entire state. Subscribe is an interesting term. It's something that we're looking into heavily and I've been working with the attorney's office on that as far as what it means right now to subscribe. And we have, and sorry, I left this out, by the end of August to subscribe. That means that we are committing to entering the program to a specific size that can be allocated according to that local government carve out that they're going to give over the grid. In mid-September, we'll find out what that exact number is going to be based on, you know, how the percentages roll out. And then we're going to enter into a contract with them once the production starts to come online in 2022 is, is what we're told.
But we have the ability, and Hank explained this because I'm going to butcher it. But we have the ability at some point to pull back out because the key is going to be in the rate, you know? And whether, and what that return is. So the upfront investment costs you X amount of dollars and then your rate. And, and that's how Hank gets to the payback period, you know, five to seven years.
I would like to get some more information and I'm sure you're going to bring all that back to us. But on their website, there's an example, I'm just using round numbers where the subscription fee at the top of the bill was 50 bucks and the credit at the bottom was five bucks. So what are you getting for that $45 contribution over five years is the major benefit to the community that Duke's able to add solar for their, their Florida grid? Because for the individual company or government, there's no ownership at the end of that. You don't have solar panels on your installation and you have no ownership. So I think I need to understand the cost benefit part of it.
Yeah, absolutely. And there's two things there. One is that the rates have been submitted to the Public Service Commission for approval. And that is, it's what's called their tariff schedule. So they're actually going to, the subscription fee is $8.35 a kilowatt block. So for every kilowatt block that we're going to buy of solar is going to be $8.35. We need up to 68,000 for our entire energy usage. But we're not going to get that because they just don't have that much to sell to us. The credit is, starts at just over four cents a kilowatt hour. And so there's some math there on converting the blocks to the hours. But after the fourth year, that credit starts to increase one and a half percent. Slow, slowly but surely, in the 30 years, you start to, that credit starts to exceed the fee. And that's how they designed the program and, and it's what they've submitted to the Public Service Commission. There's, there are a lot of unknowns as far as if numbers are going to change in the next year and feedback from the Public Service and Commission and the hearings and the schedule. But Duke is, you know, actively supplying data to them and trying to get support. So, and this isn't new to the state. Florida Power and Light submitted and was approved, the Solar Together Program last year. So they're mirroring that, but making improvements to this as well. I will add that Duke has stipulated that there will be net positive benefits to the community as a whole. So all of their customers, because they'll have reduced costs from other type of electricity production over time. They won't have to put new turbines online. They'll have reduced operations costs and maintenance and emissions and things like that from your more traditional plants. Additionally, they are going to have carve out about 26% for residential and small businesses, including a low income carve out within that. And so we're analyzing those numbers and the impact to, to, you know, the community and our constituents, you know, regarding that facet of the program as well.
Okay, thank, thank you. I look forward to hearing more about it and understanding. Appreciate it.
Yes, of course.
Commissioner Seal, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was curious whether they are looking at sites within Penous County to do a solar farm, i.e. maybe Toy Town. And then the second question, I have three questions. My second question is, the waste to energy plant, how will that affect that? And we haven't had an update on that lately, we don't have to do that today. And third, in the written backup material, it says the ROI over the 30 years of the program is estimated to be 125-30% of the program cost. Could you explain that? I'm a little puzzled by that.
Yes. Thank you. Absolutely, Commissioner. Thank you. And I'll start with the first. Essentially, you know, the, the money that we'll put into the program, we expect 25 to 30% back on, on top of it. So over the 30 years, we will see a net cumulative, cumulative return on the program. Because as I mentioned earlier, that credit that we're going to get is going to increase one and a half percent while the subscription fee remains the same. So just using their calculators and estimators over the 30 years, that's what it's looking like. Many things can change. But that's, that, those are the numbers that we have to work off right now. For the waste to energy plant impact, I have talked with Paul Sacco about that. And there's, from, from what we understand, there's no correlation with, you know, the power purchase agreement that's happening with the plant and, you know, the impact to what that plant produces and what it puts onto the line. This would be, if anything, we would need to decide if we want to subscribe his facility accounts into this program itself. So that's, that's pretty much all that we know right now. And so, you know, the, his building's on site, literally, do we want to subscribe those into this program? And we haven't done the full analysis on the total impact on, on the waste energy plant and transmission lines, et cetera. From sites in Penous County, I don't have a good answer for that. All Duke has stated is that with, with, they are going to build 10 new sites in the Florida territory. They do have a few sites in central and north Florida right now that have operated for years. And so they have been selling solar power. And this goes into an analysis now of, you know, what their 10-year site plan looks like, what they've submitted to the state. And now that this announcement has came out, I think that they're even looking into third-party private providers. And so I, I don't have, and I also don't know the exact acreage that they need and the topography, et cetera, for a site that produces 750 megawatts. But I know that Duke has been interested in that site as well as others to at least have some solar capacity within the county. Whether it's part of this program or, you know, for anything else, I don't have that answer right now.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. We have an overall relationship with Duke Energy, so it's nice to think of all of it when we're looking at an individual. So it's nice to to think of all of it when we're looking at an individual program. So looking forward to hearing more about that. I think there's probably, I'm I'm seeing nodding heads that we're interested in learning more. But certainly we'll look forward to hearing back from you before we go into any kind of contract situation.
Absolutely. And again, um, there's gonna, there there will not be a, um, and Don's staff has looked into this, but there will not be an actual contract until the program is online in twenty twenty-two. And first, they need approval from the Public Service Commission. Right now, they're just looking for early subscribers um up until um August thirty-one. If we don't become an early subscriber and and they say, according to the terms and conditions, that um we can cancel at any time. There's no fee to cancel. But uh there will be a one-month commitment into the program as an early subscriber, uh, uh, you know, at the most, if if we do pull back. Um, but if we don't, since they are expecting one hundred percent of that local government allocation, there's a chance if we don't subscribe, we won't be able to get in.
So what is, what's that cost? Because we're not going to see this again for that one-month commitment. So what are we talking about, Barry?
You know the answer to that?
Um, yeah, so um hypothetically, you know, I I this is, this is at the most. If we were to subscribe to one hundred percent of our energy usage, again, which we can't because they won't have that availability, that um total monthly allocation will be just between one and two thousand dollars. You know, when you take, when you uh factor in what the fee is going to be as well as the credit. And we did confirm uh with Duke that um if we were to cancel as an early subscriber, that they would apply the credit um to that one month fee if we if we were to pull out.
So there's really no harm of getting in as an early subscriber and we awaiting the final details that.
But you 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 will be back to us with those details.
Correct, absolutely. Yeah, and absolutely before, then that was the intention. And, you know, we laid that out in the staff report that we will come back to you with more details on the program once we know our size and the impacts on on what that means to us as a whole. And then um also from a procurement standpoint and contractually, uh, we, you know, we we would want to in inform the commission and get approval for that as well.
So you're basically looking for a cou- a couple thousand dollar commitment right now per month? Until we hear back from you? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yes, but and and the these not, this financial impact won't be seen until um twenty twenty-two.
So we're, let's, I I think Commissioner is asking specifically what are they being asked to uh commit to? So we say um we want in, all right? So now we've, in essence, um subscribed uh for the early um adopter. And the, even though we don't have a contract, um, that's going to cost us one or two thousand dollars, of which if we, when we do have the final details, we'll be able to opt out. And then that thousand dollars, two thousand dollars would be uh credited against our bill.
Correct, yeah. And I and that's the most I expect. If if we were to cancel as an early subscriber and get charged that one month, I expect us more under one thousand dollars.
So so that there's, there's very, my, that was my understanding. I wanted to get clear on that, though. There's very little risk of us doing that. Um, but we do have to opt in because those credits will be um allocated um prior to the final details uh coming in. And then, and so we then can make the final decision at that time.
So when do you anticipate coming back to us with uh maybe some more answers to questions that have been asked or ones that probably want to be asked but haven't been asked yet?
Well, I know that um uh mo- most likely, I think the best timing would be this fall. Uh, you know, we're going to do our due diligence and and uh ask for a proper subscription size. Um, and then what we've been told is in mid September, they're going to tell us exactly what that subscription size is going to be, you know, and how far it's going to get knocked down, whether that's thirty, forty, fifty, seventy percent. Um, and so we'll we'll be able to have more exact details and answers regarding that.
Okay, and I think that that would bring comfort to commissioners, and I'm just guessing because I'm certainly um understanding probably less than I understand. So I I look forward to uh being enlightened a little bit more um in September, hopefully. Uh, Commissioner Long?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question, Hank. I just wanted to thank you for your efforts on this partnership and to say that it's such a pleasure to work with you on your work and with Duke. And it really, this whole plan really fits in so nicely with our sustainability and resiliency strategic effort that we talked about in our strategic plan way back last Ja- January, early February. And so I couldn't be more excited to jump on board and support the initiative. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner.
Um, Don, Don, uh, do we, do we need to get, since we're committing to some degree of dollars here, even though there's, do we need to open that? Open that up?
It's it's just direction for me. I have the authority to be able to do that. I just wanted to to, before I I went down this path, wanted to get it before the commission, have this discussion. We'll bring you back a um uh a resolution and a subs- and this the actual subscription in October. Um, we're probably going to get the the Duke uh response in September, and so that would set up the timeline. So, you know, but I but I'll go ahead and commit us as as long as there's no opposition to the be an early adopter. Um, and then we'll bring back the details again. If if it, if the cost benefit's not there, um, you know, we have, we have the option of pulling back out. And um, but, you know, it's, they they asked me for that. I'm like, oh, this is kind of a big deal and and not all the details are coming together. So um I wanted to at least have a discussion with the commission so you understood the parameters of the program.
All right, Commissioner Welch?
Yeah, I I I'm supportive of the concept. I can't say that I've got enough info to be enthusiastic. And I think part of that is because of the larger issue of this going through the PSC and Duke's approach to funding solar for all ratepayers. I mean, are we subsidizing folks who aren't in this subscription program? I just don't have those parts of the puzzle. So I, it's a small amount of money. I get it. And I, it fits into our strategic priority, but I've got several questions on it. I just wanted to state that.
And I, and I understand that, you know, to to the other question, Commissioner Seal, Commissioner Long, we've talked to Duke about, you know, some of these issues. We'd love to be able to take the energy from our waste energy facility and and um because we're selling it back to the grid at a fraction of what we have to buy the rest of our energy here in Pinellas County uh for. And but that's not possible under the structure um that that we have here in the state. So um that's, those are the challenges with uh this. So that's the reason Hank was saying it's two separate issues. That continues to be a goal. I don't think we're going to be successful with it, but we're going to continue to work on that.
It it would be nice to get an update on that, even if it's one-on-one, how that's going. We've been talking about that for three years and four years, and it's just the closer it gets, the less leverage we have um in extending and and trading off. And but anyway, that's not for today. Uh, Don, I'm going to go back to you anyway and ask you, do we need to do anything as far as uh bringing residents on for this? Uh, opening that up for comment?
No, Commissioner, uh, I I previously spoken with staff, and this is within um Barry's authority unilaterally, but he just wanted to bring the board into the, make them aware of what was going on. So no.
That's fine. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions before we move on? So I think, Hank, you have the support to go forward, and uh we we look forward to uh additional information and presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate your support.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to item five, which is establishing the maximum millage rates for certification to the property appraiser.
Um, today, today, we have a presentation from Bill Berger. Again, this is establishing the maximum rates. Um, this is this, uh, I just need consensus um from the commission. We can then certify it, post it, and follow all the procedures. I'll let Bill provide a brief presentation and and he'll cover the steps uh to complete that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Welcome.
Thank you. So uh as Barry stated, uh, there's uh two aspects of this particular item. Uh, the first one, and the more important, most important piece is that we're going to be uh asking you for support for establishing the maximum millage rates that were required to certify the property appraiser by August fourth of next week. Uh, these are the rates that will be included in the trim notices that are sent to all property owners. And the latter part of August, uh, somewhere around the neighborhood of August twentieth or twenty-first. Once those are certified, the millage rates can be decreased if you so choose, but they cannot be increased. And one of the considerations that we need to uh keep in mind is that uh if you have feedback regarding the FY twenty-one proposed budget, that may influence what the required maximum millage rate that we would need in order to be able to fund those changes. So as far as the millage rates that we're recommending to you uh to establish as maximum millage rates, we have no proposed increases for any of the millage rates. Um, as a reminder, uh, these are a couple of the millage rates for the countywide um as well as the unincorporated fire districts. And we'll go into a little bit more detail in the unincorporated fire districts because we do have a recommended decrease for six of those districts. Go to the next slide. So as far as the reductions, uh, we are looking to reduce for Clearwater, Dunedin, Gandy, Largo, Safety Harbor, Seminole, and the South Pasadena unincorporated fire districts. And uh just to keep you informed as far as how we come up with these millage rate recommendations, uh, we do have a multi-year forecast, just like we do for our other ten major funds for each of the individual unincorporated fire districts. That forecast is intended to help us understand what the future capital needs are, which would include both potentially fire engines and other apparatus, as well as fire stations that are being uh used by the providers uh that are providing services in the these unincorporated fire districts. So we looked at the forecast for these particular six districts. What we recognized is that the forecast shows that there's sufficient funding for us to be able to reduce the millage to effectively the rollback rate or an approximation of that with this next year and sustain that moving forward and still have sufficient reserves in place to meet both the operating needs and the future capital that's anticipated through our working with those providers. So that's the basis of bring for these recommended millage reductions. And actually, uh, correction, I inadvertently included Seminole on there. Seminole is not a recommended reduction. Um, as you see on there, that is the same millage rate that's being recommended as currently. So um apologize for the mix-up on that, but you can't see the current millage recommended uh or the current millage as opposed to the proposed millage that we're recommending that you bring forward as the maximum millage that's on the trim notices. If we go to the next slide. Uh, next, I want to provide an opportunity for feedback regarding the FY twenty-one proposed budget because, as I said, in order for us to be able to set the maximum millage rates, we need to know that there's sufficient funding uh based on the needs that are expressed in the budget that's being brought forward. So based on the proposed budget that we've presented, the millage rates that we're recommending are sufficient to be able to meet the needs uh as well as being able to stay within the needs during the forecast periods. Um, however, if there are changes recommended and desired, this would be a good time to be able to try to discuss those so that we can determine if that would influence our recommendation on the millage rate. And with that, I'd entertain any feedback and questions that y'all may have regarding the proposed budget.
Can you get that off the screen then?
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's okay. That's right. You were, you were going there. I was jumping the gun. Sorry. Um, yeah, so Commissioner, uh, I see Commissioner Long. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my, my question, Bill, is on these, what I understand is now five fire districts, not six. Is that correct?
Uh, no, it is actually six, but on the screen, there were seven shown. So I erroneously included a seventh district that does not have a proposed change.
Okay, I I apologize for that. Uh, have have we had discussions with those individual departments to ensure that we are not doing this? And then they're going to, you know, have a meltdown when they hear about it?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, we're in uh continuing dialogue with the all of the districts to make sure that we're on the same page with respect to the current costs and the projected future costs, particularly as it relates to the capital and also the uh, you know, both uh the apparatus as well as the uh stations themselves and what the timing of those may look like. Um, each of those partners, for the most part, is a city partner. So they also are going through these same deliberations regarding what the needs are from a capital perspective that would significantly influence this. And we've taken a very conservative approach in determining that we can make these millage reductions. And when I say conservative, what I mean by that is that the forecast that we've put forward um and used for determining that is showing more of a decrease um over the forecast period in property tax values than we have estimated in our proposed budget. And that's in order to be more conservative, just in case.
And so my follow-up, if I may, Mr. Chair, is um, does that include consideration for the fact that we know from the property appraiser that twenty twenty-one will be okay, but going into twenty twenty-two and maybe twenty-three, things could be a lot more dire?
Yes, Commissioner, we've actually uh not only included what we have in the proposed budget as far as anticipated reductions based on what the property appraiser has told us, we've actually made it even more of a, you know, dire forecast, so to speak, um, something that looks worse than what we're predicting, just in case to ensure that we do have a little bit of wiggle room in there.
Excellent. I knew the answer to that. I just wanted to hear you say it. So thank you for making me feel better. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, hey, um, you've said a couple of times now about capital as it relates to these fire districts. And I've had recent conversation with a fire district um up in North County that um has stated the case for some additional help from the fund for an additional position. Um, going through all of the, 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 um, I guess, the background and the due diligence, et cetera, to 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 state the case and to have agreement to it. Um, and then, um, and there was obviously some agreement from staff, at least that's what I was told. Um, but there's a concern about this two- and three-year window. Um, and um, so I had proposed a different alternative. I've gotten an answer back. I'm gonna, I would like to meet with staff to talk about that answer because I wasn't quite clear about it. There may be more than one station that's looking for that. But I would certainly like to have a sense of 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 reasonable requests for additional position funding that that meets the justification, but but because of concern of budget issues, we're not going to address that. So I just, you know, and again, I don't know the extent of that and how that would relate at all to the millages that we're talking about.
Commissioner, the the rollback rate uh wouldn't affect that district. Um, so they, that's not on the list. So this would be simply setting the maximum rates um for the end, but not include, that district's not included in one of the rollback rates.
So so the point, so the what I'm asking is, is that if there's that and maybe two or three other stations that have the same request in there, and they're not on this list, I'm just, is that still open for discussion? And that leads to my other question is, are we going to have another budget workshop in 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 August to kind of, maybe there's some loose questions that people want to kind of take another run at. Um, I'd like to take a look at this, but maybe there's some other ones. We have another opportunity to talk about the budget. I just want to make sure that we're not doing things that would affect the millage rate today, but another day for the discussion on the budget.
Commissioner, if I um, I might be able to partially address the first uh part of your question related to the fire district and the positions. Um, it's my understanding that the positions that are being discussed are related to the first responder agreements. And as a result, they do not influence the fire district millages. And in addition to that, as uh the county administrator noted, uh, that particular fire district that you were speaking with is not part of our unincorporated fire district. That's an independent fire district.
So when it seek, when it seeks some funding from our, I guess it's from our EMS fund, is that's where it comes? I, but that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I said, that's correct. It'd be from the EMS fund.
Okay, so I just, that's, that's the only place that it would have any effect. I mean, anyway, I just want to make sure that that we have an opportunity to look at those requests in light of, you know, our budget discussion so that we're not hurting ourselves today in any way. That's all.
And Bill, if you could, just talk about the the budget calendar and the opportunities for uh discussion of specific, specific items within the budget at a later date.
Yeah, so um we do have an opportunity to be able to have additional discussions at future work sessions between now and the presentation of the tentative budget and millages on September tenth. So this is not your last bite at the apple, so to speak, before we come forward on September tenth.
So we have two commission meetings, obviously, in August, and we have. So we have two commission meetings, obviously, in August, and we have a weekly, I'm assuming we'll have a weekly meeting to discuss the emergency authorization. So do you see, do you have one planned yet, Barry, or is that just kind of open ended?
Yeah, I guess it's it's based on the commission. If you have questions regarding the that that was a recommended budget, it is certainly within your purview to review, ask questions, change. And so we can schedule that at any of the workshops, or we can do that at September tenth when we present, you know, that that's probably too late. You would want to do that beforehand so we can schedule that for one of the work sessions here in August. It's no problem.
Yeah, I'd like it to be included somewhere in one of those work sessions or emergency meetings. And, you know, if we, if we have two questions and we're done, so be it. But I think just one more opportunity to kind of come back and I just think there's some more discussions that we need to have. I know that we've gotten quite a few emails this this week about some some items relating to mental health and some of the efforts that we've made in the last year. And so, you know, there may be an opportunity to have additional discussion there about that item as well. I just want to make sure that we have one more chance to to take a peek at it.
Well, we can certainly, you know, to discuss anything you want today, and you have then a budget information session scheduled for August the sixth. So that's, that's next Thursday. And because after that, we have the Board of Commissioners meeting on August eleventh, and then you don't have another meeting until the BCC work session on September third, so. Yeah, that's the way it was scheduled. That was the but, that was the commission calendar. You had that that break period pre-scheduled. Which doesn't mean you couldn't call another meeting, especially since we can do them virtually, but that's that's currently what the schedule is.
Okay. And speaking of that, have we heard anything about the virtual versus? Has that been, nothing yet?
It's not Friday at four fifty nine, so I haven't heard anything yet.
Yes, Commissioner, this, this is Don. The the governor did late yesterday adopt a new emergency order extending the virtual meetings. In fact, it amended it in a couple of ways, specifically to some of the stuff you're talking about. It it made very clear that a taxing authority holding village and budget hearings or meetings regarding non-advalorem assessment are not required to have a quorum or super majority present at a specific public place. And another thing relating to value adjustment boards, but and there are three different expiration dates of the order depending on which section you're looking at, but the general order now has been extended to September first. The other extensions are longer than that, so.
Okay, so for any of our meetings in August, any of our meetings in August, they can be virtual.
Yes, sir.
So that that's, I guess, a decision we'll have to make, but Commissioner Peters?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, as far as virtual meetings, I think that if we're gonna kid send our kids to school, that we should be present in meetings whenever they start school. I think that should just be our rule of thumb. If we're gonna expect our children to go to classrooms and be in a school, then I think we ought to expect ourselves to be in public meetings in person. That's just my thought, as long as you brought the subject up.
Commissioner Long, did I see your hand?
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Chair. On my question, before I get to the comment that Commissioner Peters just made, is that since we are here today and since we have just recently heard the presentation from our consultants on the path forward for our mental health solutions in this county, I'm I'm wondering if we couldn't perhaps have a quick lunch break and come back and have Lordess just just review for purposes of clarification, because there has been an awful lot of disingenuous information that has been shared with an awful lot of folks about where we all are going and what direction we're all thinking about. And I would like to have that clarification before we get into any in-depth discussion about that. And and I think sooner rather than later, because obviously we are dealing with a pandemic on top of trying to get our budget put to rest, and I think that's very important. As for the issue about meeting in person as our children are going back to school, I do believe that it's very misguided as much as we all want our children to be in school. My biggest concern for them is their health and welfare and that of the many teachers that are going back as well. And I don't know that there's been enough conversation about the effects of our adults being in the population, going into the schools and teaching our kids, having the kids bringing back whatever they've been exposed to as a result of the teachers and the adults that they're exposed to during the day and how that potentially puts entire families in quarantine unwittingly. And so while we know that with every big decision that's made, there are always unintended consequences. I agree with Commissioner Peters. It's very bad optics for our continued continued virtual meetings. That said, I think the virtual meetings need to continue as long as we are able to to ensure that we're able to keep on conducting the people's business appropriately. So that's just my thought. Thank you.
Commissioner Welch.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's okay. I'm not muted. I I agree with Commissioner Long, you know, I think it leads through all this, and I hadn't heard about the governor's latest change that we should go virtual. I think we have to go wherever the facts lead us at the time. I mean, we're on a good trajectory now with, you know, reduction in cases and percent positive, but you know, the schools is the next big opportunity for surge. That's what the health professionals have told us. And I do think that the Zoom platform allows actually more people to participate safely. So at a minimum, I'd hope we do something that's hybrid so folks could still participate via Zoom. But I just think that because the schools are going back is not a reason for us to go back at the same time, because I think that is, I don't think the health care professionals led that effort. And like Commissioner Long, I'm hearing from teachers who are concerned about their own health going back into the classroom and the numbers that the Times printed seem to be opposite of what we heard in the eight o'clock meetings that actually sixty percent of parents were choosing online virtual. That's what was printed in the Times a couple of days ago. So there's there's certainly not going to be a hundred percent of the kids going back to class on the twenty fourth. And then the whole sports part of that as well, I think is going to be problematic as well. I mean, you saw what happened with the Miami Marlins with all the precautions that MLB could put on. Yet we've, we're gonna have football at our high school. So I just think we need to wait and see what what it looks like on the ground, but for August, I'm comfortable with us going virtual or hybrid at a minimum. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Barry, our next meeting is is August sixth, you said?
That's correct.
And that and that's a, it's not a quote commission meeting, but it is a virtual meeting to deal with the
Budget Information Session.
But and the continuing renewal of our, okay, so we'll have those.
It was a scheduled meeting, and we do have a comp plan update on that agenda, and then we'll do the agenda briefing for the following Tuesday. So that's that's the sixth, and that's the prep, the prep workshop for the regular meeting on the eleventh.
Okay, and so for those two meetings, those two meetings will be well before kids go back to school. So for those two meetings for sure, I think we're hearing is virtual. I think that we can just, we can have those continuing conversations at meetings. It's about whether to go virtual or or not. I don't think we have to take a stand today. There could be something that develops in the next week or two that changes each of our minds, but certainly for the next two meetings, which gets us through about, well, you said the eleventh to plan on virtual meetings. And then, and then we can kind of see where we go from there. I, you know, I don't think we need to take, you know, be dramatic about this in any way, so. Commissioner Justice, I'm so sorry. I've written your name down and I keep like scratching it out, so, sorry.
Story of my life. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things, I think when we're we're talking about meeting in person, and I think the Extension Center worked out pretty well. But no, it's not just the seven of us coming together in a big room. It's all the support staff that has to show up in those meeting spots, all the communication staff. And everything we do is not about eliminating risk but reducing risk. And then I also think it's really important because no matter how much we've said it in the past, you'll see it all over social media and conversations is that the Pinellas County Commission does not oversee the schools, and we don't have a role in whether the schools reopen or not open. And I think make, as we're talking about it, we need to make that clear so people are not confused out in the public that we own the decisions we make, but we don't have that authority to make those decisions. And I think some of these conversations that we're having today may confuse some of our constituents.
Yeah, thank you. I did, and one of the comments that Commissioner Welch made was about that, you know, more participation from our residents. So even when we go forward and we get back to back to in-person meetings, it'll be interesting to continue looking at that avenue to allow more people to plug in, may make for a little bit longer meetings, but ultimately, we're trying to get people to participate and having to drive all the way down here, find a parking place, feed the meters, all that stuff. It just, you know, this is a good alternative for folks. And so the downside of not having in-person meetings, I mean, I get that, but the upside is that we are getting more, I would say significantly more participation from our residents. So that's, that's, that's a positive thing, so. Okay, anything else? Commissioner Long made a comment, Barry, about point of clarification about where we are prior to our last budget hearing or meeting that we're gonna have in August, which can change things. We know that we can make changes at that point, not on mileage rate, but on how we spend the dollars that we have. And we, right now, in the budget, we have a fairly high reserve level plan.
Correct.
So do you, do you, would you like, do you think it's important for that clarification as well and maybe just have, you know, fifteen, you know, ten, fifteen minutes of kind of where we are in that, or or do we just want to wait a week and and address it next Thursday?
Happy to address it right now. You know, it's it's been out there. I mean, you know, obviously, when I gave my budget recommendation and Lordess is on the line, but and I wanted to speak to this. She's worked hand, you know, and hand in hand with community partners and with staff regarding coming up with a mental health plan that that works and, you know, not a repeating of some past attempts to really bring a coordinated system together. Obviously, primary, you know, responsibility with mental health services lies in a network provided through Central Florida Behavioral Health. We need community partners to come together to make some of these advances. And data is a critical piece for any decision that we make. That was very clear in the KPMG report. And so the recommendations were that first, we have the data. We do a data analysis. We bring part community partners together where we are actually sharing data, which occurs somewhat now, but it certainly can be improved. That was the key finding in the recommendations. It was also to supplement our staff to be working on specifically this issue along with KPMG to have this community engagement to advance mental health and drug addiction services in a coordinated manner. The second piece to that was a central access point. They, but they clearly said in the report, you first need to get through certain data collection pieces, get some of the structural issues to move to that next step. Now, we're in the middle of, you know, trying to figure out the impact that all this is going to have on us. And so as my part of my budget recommendations, I said that that is something that we should get to as after we bring community partners together. And I even said, it may be during the year. If we are very successful, we could bring that back. The way the way in which you would pay for that is, as you said, Commissioner Eggers, out of our reserves because we've we've planned for that. But we also will then have six months, seven months, eight months into where we're at financially and and whether and how much community partners can assist in both supporting it structurally and also financially. And so we'll be much further along to be able to make that decision at the at that time. And so it's not a, certainly, my recommendation wasn't against that that issue. We're all working towards the same goal. I just said structurally, that's how I made a recommendation is to not include it in, but to look at that as we progress with coming together as community partners to try to advance the way in which we integrate care. Lordess is on the line. She can speak much more in depth. She's had many conversations with KPMG. I had a personal conversation with them to say, is the approach that we're taking appropriate or or not? And they 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 concurred with that. That's a reasonable approach. Would they like to see us advance that and put that in the budget? Sure. But they also recognize that the key to making any of this successful is to actually have a coordinated effort. And that's where we need to focus on, and and that's where the data collection analysis is key.
Very, very, maybe Lordess can speak to it as well when she makes a couple of comments, but it seemed to me that when they had the schedule, the time schedule laid out, that there was time in this year starting to work towards that, you know, other element that, in other words, we're not, you're not dumping all the money in this year necessarily, but the work leading up to that can happen in parallel. It doesn't have to happen, one thing happening and then the next thing happening. There were, there was going to be kind of a parallel effort going on. So anyway, Lordess, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. And Barry actually just laid it all out perfectly. I'm very of a very good memory. It's exactly what he just said is what we presented a couple of weeks ago that Daisy presented and KPMG presented. KPMG, you know, provided the lengthy report that I know that you all have seen. And if we had to prioritize what they said in conjunction with staff, because we also took a look at it and, you know, gave our opinions, is that we would do the data piece first is what we agreed to or talked to you all about. And then we also had opioids as an issue. So just as a reminder, we also talked about that with some of the funding that we still have to look at the opioid issue and and what we all provided last time. You know, some of the different options with about five hundred thousand that we currently have in our budget.
And and speak to speak to the piece, Lordess, where we were talking about the data. You you went on a, you you actually went and visited places that are, you know, ahead of us and talking about the importance of the data collection piece and and what the success has been in terms of advancing items when you have that that good solid base foundation.
Right. It's one of the things that we learned and Barry, I think you're referring to the Buffalo model to New York. They have a lot of data to make decisions on what we call the health of the mental health system. I think we all you know, agree that it's not the system we want it to be today, right? But we, what proof do we have? What data do we have to make the decisions on what we do with the limited funding that we have? So in order to know how quickly you can get in, where to go, we need that data. Although you've heard me talk about that we have a lot of data, and we do, we have a ton of data. We don't feel it's the right data. And that was even more obvious when we had the meetings with KPMG of what we're missing in this county, because it's not all about just our data. It's it's the state data and other data. So that's where we thought we needed to start if we had to prioritize all of this.
Okay. Thank you, Lordess. Commissioner Peters?
Commissioner Long, I'm glad you brought this up. So if you'll indulge me, I have kind of a long statement about this topic. So KPMG did recommend two different aspects along with adding staff. Barry said when it was first presented by KPMG that we're going to do big things, and I said that last week as well. The sheriff said, we have no coordinated system in this county. Bob Dillinger said, we have no system that interacts whatsoever with anything in diversion. Currently involuntary. Currently involuntary um, evaluations, the highest five zip codes, I'll just give it to you because I'm sure you don't know it, is three, three, seven, oh, five, three, three, seven, oh, one, three, three, seven, seven, one, three, three, seven, five, six, and three, three, seven, one, two. We are currently on pace to exceed last year's death rate for overdose. Last year's death rate was a hundred more than the year prior. And this year I have no doubt will exceed that. I also believe that although our child abuse numbers have gone down and our domestic violence numbers have gone down this year, I believe once the COVID crisis is over and kids go back to school and people go back to work, you'll finally see the numbers of children and the adults that are going to be impacted by being kept in their homes. So children quietly are suffering right now with abuse because they can't be identified by mandatory reporting because they're not going to school. And the school personnel are the mandatory reporting. Many people who are suffering from domestic violence are not getting help and not able to escape it because they're not going to work every day and are not in the social circles, circles in which they can get the support that they need to escape and be safe. We have put a priority on decreasing law enforcement with critical issues with citizens. Um, and, and in my opinion, what St. Petersburg has done is a fatal change as to how they're going to respond to overdose and to mental health cause without including law enforcement. A coordinated system would address the vast majority of the issues that we're facing today. And, and right now, what we're not talking about is the impact of the citizens right now. And when you talk about one in five adults, and I'm only talking about adults, I'm not even talking about children. One in five adults suffer from mental illness every single year. That's 20% of our population. And if 20% of our population is suffering from mental illness, I promise you that their parents, their spouse, their siblings and their children are also suffering indirectly. Now, I have lots of research and I submitted that with my budget pack- packages two years ago when I asked to do some kind of a coordinated system, access system, and I also came up with a funding plan. And if you want those, those are all sent to you and it certainly can give you all the research that you need that demonstrates why this is important. There are lots of indirect costs that occur with people are suffering from severe mental illness. It's a reduced labor supply. This is just the indirect. I'm not even talking about the direct cost, but we have a reduced labor supply, a reduced educational attainment, public in- income support payments and costs associated with other consequences such as incarceration, child welfare, involvement and, and homelessness. Untreated um, severe mental illness also contributes to a high rate of emergency rooms and mortality. All of these issues could be addressed. And that would impact our affordable housing and other issues that our citizens that we have made a priority for, but we've not even worked in any kind of effective measure to take care of the root cause. You were willing to spend $600,000 on 33 high individual users that were revolving in the revolving door just in our justice system for severe mental, mental illness. You invested $600,000 and you immediately saw a 1.4 million dollar return. And yet I, I, I see the staff recommendation is kicking the can down the road when you know from your own personal experience that addressing only 33 individuals had a huge economic return. A coordinated and, and estimated cost of, and in my proposal that, that I submitted two years ago, I had recommended just off the top of my head, because I had no idea what the cost would be. I recommended a point to increase on the health department fund, which in 2018 would have generated 15.8 million dollars. All this system is asking for is $1 million this year to go simultaneously while we get the data, because absolutely the data is critically important. And in year two, we're only asking for just over $3 million for implementation. And so my projections, because I had considered maybe we might have needed more beds at a $15 million was a very high projected cost. But we're talking about in this proposal for a two-year plan, a total investment of less than $5 million. A total investment of less than $5 million. So we know we can get the money, but there's no reason whatsoever that we couldn't take that extra million dollars that was suggested in the KPM report and simultaneous work on that timeline and ensure we have the data in the process while we're writing our RFP and all the other plans for that access center that we do on that, that work simultaneously so that next year we can do implementation and we can ensure that we're helping the citizens in this county. You're willing to spend money on the sustainability, but not on our most vulnerable citizens. You are willing to supplement the school board for nurses, but not help our most vulnerable citizens. I propose that we have $1 million to fully implement the KPMG recommendations from our reserves and simultaneously work on both projects. And then take the next 10 months to determine how to fund year number two and in the future going forward. The current budget doesn't sufficiently move us forward to truly impact the quality of life for our citizens. What it does do is kick the can down the road. The plan that they have for addiction is about $500,000 and there's no plan. There's some suggestions, but there's no plan. There's absolutely no comprehensive plan that Daisy presented in that presentation. If we do this, we can move forward policies for changes legislatively because we will know and the KPMG identified legislative policies that need to be changed. And unless we move forward, we can't even do that and go to our legislature and have them finally do what is right. It's up to us to be leaders. We have other counties that have done so much more than we have. Palm Beach County has done amazing things to slow down the overdose deaths and to ensure that there's more of a coordinated system of care. Miami has huge, huge accomplishments. They didn't wait for the state to step in. They took care of their most vulnerable citizens. Our community partners have not historically played well in the sandbox. But if we were in charge of that access center and they wanted to be contracted for the referrals, then they would have to play in the sandbox. And they will play together and they will collaborate and they will be good players if we take the lead. So I'm asking you to please support funding out of reserves, the extra million dollars Barry has put in significant amount of extra reserves this year for, for foreseeing for next year, which might happen or might not happen with our property rates going down. We're talking about $1 million. And it gives us 10 months to come up with a plan for year two. And I don't think that's too much to ask for our most vulnerable citizens. And if you saw a 1.4 million dollar return on investment within the first year, definitely over the last three years on those high utilizes, 33 individuals, what makes you think that these 20% of our population won't give us a return on our investment and ensure that they have a quality of life and they can afford to stay in their homes and afford to keep their children and keep their families' health and safety? Thank you.
Um, I appreciate your comments. I don't think they're any different than any of the others, five, six commissioners that, that serve on this commission. I think we all feel very strongly about it. I think what we're trying to do is be a little bit methodical about it. I did ask the question at the beginning, Barry, about doing simultaneous efforts this coming year. Um, you know, the data collection and, and the other piece. And so next Thursday at our budget session, where we give you some additional direction for additional spending or not, um, I'd like for that, maybe to have that timeline brought up. Talk about that additional funding next year, the stuff that doesn't need to be funded, but to Commissioner Peter's point, that additional million that does something else in addition to um, getting, getting that start, that process started in parallel. So if we could have that conversation next Thursday and, and then this commission could say, um, yeah, let's, let's, let's look at that. Let's go ahead and, and, and put that additional million in. If that's what it is, to get this thing moving. Um, or no, we like the program that we came up with or what the suggestion was or prior, whatever. Let's have that conversation next Thursday. Is that something that we can do?
Be happy to have that written.
Okay. Um, any, any other comments regarding that item? You know, I think, I think Commissioner Peter summarized kind of her feelings about it. I think, you know, I think there's a lot of people in this industry that work around and in around this industry that are extremely frustrated about coming up with the exact right way to do it. It's not just throw money at it and hope that it works. Let's do it the right way. And, you know, I think the word having a plan is somewhat critically important to make this thing sustainable. So um, anyway, let's, let's do that Thursday and we'll see what the commission's position is as far as adding that million dollars.
I don't know if you can see me, Mr. Chairman, if I'm at the bottom of the.
I cannot see you.
This Commissioner Welch, if you've forgotten my voice already.
Yeah, would you like to speak, Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I look forward to the conversation next week. I just, um, and I know, I don't know if you're acting as chair in terms of responding to the 100 emails we received from FAST, but they need to get the right analysis of, of what this plan was supposed to do, because from the emails I'm reading, they didn't really understand that we had a plan uh, to do the, and I'm calling it the optimal data set, not minimum. And then move into the, the access model. There, there was never a plan not to do that, but in my understanding, it was sequential. That, that's why it was laid out that way. You identify the optimal data set first and then you move into the second part. So I was just hoping our response to them that they, that we lay that out, because every email that I'm getting, of course, is a, is a carbon copy, but they don't have the same understanding that I have from our previous conversations, that it was never our intent not to do both parts of this.
And let me, let me, let me just comment on there. And on again, we could probably you know, go over this all today, but you know, I'll certainly have it ready for tomorrow. But there, there are a lot of pieces to putting this together. I mean, you've got three independent en- entities. So when we start, start talking about a coordinated access model, they've got their own established practices. They've got their own boards. They've got to agree to participate. I understand Commissioner Peter's comments about putting that in, but there's a lot of coordination that will need to occur. That to get to the data set, we need a lot of cooperation. These are not entities that report to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, and that's the reason I think we, in some ways, there's been um, progress made over the years, but not to the degree that it, that it needs to. That's not uncommon, unfortunately, but we do have a plan now. You know, I committed to um, uh, FAST in April of 2019 to work with our community partners. That was the commitment to create a plan and we have a plan. Um, and, and so now we've got to work on that. And so the way in which we phase it, the way we, in terms we bring together, the way in which we put resources into that, um, we've done that. We did that last year in the budget by funding this study. Now we're talking about an implementation schedule. But again, just because we go to an implementation schedule doesn't necessarily mean that it's all on the Board of County Commissioners. We need the community partners and, and that is going to take some work. And so I will certainly lay out those timelines and those issues. Um, but that's, this is where um, that partnership is going to be key to be able to advancing any of these items.
Yep. Thank you, Barry. Uh, Commissioner Seal, did I see your hand?
Thank you. And um, I appreciate the comments that have been made. Um, as the person who brought the high flyer program and the nurses and school program to the county commission for their approval. Um, it took me in both programs, probably a year to two years before we could launch it and fund it. So um, I know it's hard to be patient. We have been working on mental health since I've been a commissioner and trying to work with our community partners for many, many years to make um, a seamless, accessible um, place to go. But we, but I firmly agree that we have to have the data set first. And I agree with Commissioner Welsh that I saw it as sequential, that once we got the data set done, then we can move into the access. Um, but you, but we can't, I'd love to do it simultaneously. Um, and I look forward to having that discussion next week, but um, we need to be realistic in what, and, and work with the community partners as been stated, because that is the whole key to making the access part work. So um, anyway, we'll talk more next week, but it does, I know it takes a lot of patience and um, and, and I think we're going to get there.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have sat here really, really struggling with how to respond to Commissioner Peter's impassioned um, message to us. And I would just like to uh, say that I'm happy to have this conversation next week when Barry and Lourdes and all the folks that have worked so hard on this plan have an opportunity to bring it back in a thoughtful way. I appreciate, as always, Commissioner Seal's very thoughtful comments with regard to the involvement that this commission has had on these issues for as long as I've been on this county commission. And if there's one thing I've learned, you cannot bully this commission into getting what you want if you don't take some time to build collaborative relationships and have a little bit of respect for the hard work and thoughtfulness that they have put into these issues in a way that uses our public tax dollars to the very, very best of our ability. I do believe that the commissioners that represent this county right now are all here because we are true public servants who only want to serve our citizens. And to insinuate by grouping us all together, that we know this or we don't know that, to me is outrageous. I remember when I was on the homeless leadership board, how difficult it was to try to lift myself out of the conversation going on in the moment and think about and respect the different organizations that were coming to us begging and pleading and wanting all of these uh, issues to be fixed and to be fixed immediately. But you know, we are here on the shoulders of giants that have come before us, trying to move this county forward. And I believe in my heart that we have put our heart and soul, our time and energy into solving these issues. And we all have passionate issues that we care about. I am by nature not a very patient woman, but I have learned, I have learned throughout my life that if it's an issue worthwhile, if it's an issue you deeply and sincerely and honorably care about, it doesn't work. It isn't a one-man army. You have got to bring your colleagues along to be able to get on your side of the issue. And so trying to be angry and deal with this from an emotional place instead of an intellectual one, where we are really considering the data and being truthful about the data and what we've done and what's transpired is what has given our, our citizens the faith, trust and confidence that they have in this county commission. So I hope that we can get back on that track where we really respect and honor one another and especially respect the years of service that these folks have put into this community. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to be just as passionate and just as outspoken so that we all can get back to a very civil, respectful, kinder place and get things done. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
Okay, Barry. Um, I think, you know, you've heard from, from everybody. Um, we can take another look at this next Thursday. Um, and, and just see if we're on that right path. If there's something else we can do to energize next, next year's efforts additionally, um, authorizing some funding if we get to that point, whatever that, whatever that scenario is. Let's take a look at it next week and uh, at our budget session.
Well done.
Okay. All right. It is, it is high noon. We have one item left, which is the budget information session, just as it relates to the county commission budget. Now, you all can tell me if you think we can be done in half an hour and go ahead and get finished and then break from, and then we're go about our business for the rest of the day. Or take a, take a break and, and uh, come back for it. Uh, I'll.
I'd like to take a break.
I'm seeing a few nodding heads, so we will be back at 12:30 to uh, address the last item.
Nice conversation in the last item. I forgot that we had some finishing work still to do. So I apologize Barry and Bill. So let us know the direction that you need from us.
Just so our intent is to post the millage rates as presented and we will do so. And I just want that consensus from the commission to move forward. I don't need a formal vote, but I need that following the direction from the commission, we will post those.
Yeah, I think, I think on the two items that we talked about, both had other sources of funding that wouldn't be requiring any kind of millage adjustment. So I think the comfortable was there. I'm not. Do I, do I hear any of the commissioners in okay with moving forward?
Okay.
Everybody nodding. I didn't see, I see, I see four nodding plus my own. So that's, I guess that's enough. Bill, there you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. The last item, commissioners, the last item is you would ask for a information session regarding your individual commission, commissioner budget. So Cecilia has kind of broken that down for you. And so she has a brief presentation be able to show you and we can for the purposes of this discussion.
Thank you, Cecilia. Welcome.
Thank you. So for the record, my name is Cecilia McCorkle. I'm with the Office of Management and Budget. I am the budget analyst for the BCC department. And today we're going to discuss your department budget. Brian, if you can start, thank you. So these numbers are reflective of what's included in the proposed budget. So not unlike any of the other departments, we can amend them, we can change them before we adopt it. Currently for 21, we have $2.3 million appropriated across, and that's the total of all seven commission districts. Of that, 95.6% of that is personal services. So six significant percentages, just payroll. Included in that also is another close to $100,000 for operating expenses. And I'm going to remind you, this is for all seven districts where it's 99, a little over 99,000. And that's a little over $28,000 increase from FY20. And the drivers for that increase are that $15,000 for the events budget and an increase of a little over $13,000 for board related travel. And these numbers, just to remind you, were pre-COVID discussion related budget. So that's where these numbers came from, where those conversations that we had a little bit earlier in the year prior to COVID-19. Structurally for FY21, I wanted to make you aware of a change when you're looking at your line item budgets. What we've implemented into our budget software for 21 is the creation of a new cost center, an eighth cost center. And that cost center would include most of your shared or all of your shared expenses plus non-discretionary expenses. And that, so that would include your salaries, which are non-discretionary, as you're aware, they're set by the state. And just for awareness purposes, we usually don't receive the amount of your salary until usually it's too late to incorporate it into the budget. It's usually later August or September. So what we do for the purposes of producing the budget is I usually look at a three to four year trend of the changes to your salaries. And for the purposes of 21, I've incorporated one and a half percent increase, which is an average of the change from FY17 to FY20 in your salaries. Also, I wanted to mention your desk, front desk position currently and in prior years has been split seven ways across each of the districts. So, you know, if you do the math, that's not an even split. So each year there are a couple of districts, one or two that tend to carry a heavier burden of that position. And so it's never quite reflective of the actual expenses for just that district. Since that is a shared position, it just doesn't split out evenly with the seven ways. And so since we were planning to move all of those into the eighth cost center, it only made sense to be consistent and move all the other salaries and benefits there. So that's one of the changes that we've incorporated when you're looking at your line item budget. And then the other costs that we've included in there are shared costs for the floor printer, your risk allocations, which you're, as you're aware, are not discretionary. Shared office supplies. Now, this may not be all the office supplies that you all use, but these are the ones that are intended to be shared among the floor. And computer replacements, we have this kind of as a placeholder here. Obviously you can see that there's nothing incorporated in FY21 because your computers aren't scheduled for replacement in 21, but we do expect that in 22. So I just wanted to make you aware that's where that would fall. And again, that's a non-recurring, you know, it's in every three year, you'll see that spike. And it just keeps it clean to keep it out of your individual district cost centers when you're comparing your year to year. And then the last thing we have in, in that particular cost center is the $15,000 for the events budget. So in your individual cost centers, which would be representative of your discretionary costs in each of your districts, we've included $10,000. It's a little bit higher from last year. Again, we were trying to include an increase for the training and a little bit of inflation as far as some of your other operating expenses. So you can see from this slide that we have, right now, everybody was allocated $9,000 for travel and training. We go through a process which we have not completed yet for this budget development year due to COVID-19. Where each of the commissioners can move that, move this $10,000 to their line items however they like. But this is how we started it out. Just to, so it was obvious what we were doing with the travel and training based on the earlier discussions. And we were increasing that. And then the operating, the $1,000 plus what was in that shared cost center is representative of the average spend by all the districts over the course of the past four years. So usually there's a, about a 13, we've averaged about 1,300 in operating supplies that were operating cost other than training. And some of that 1,500 has been moved to that shared cost center, but the rest of it's reflective of what is commonly spent on average across all the districts. And then this final slide is really just to give you a visual of what the different approach looks like. So in FY20, where you didn't have that shared cost center, you see all the individual district budgets, and that includes all your personal services plus all of the shared costs and non-discretionary costs. And you'll see that they're not all exactly the same because like I said, we have the, the front desk that splits seven ways. Plus we have, you know, different people in stages of retirement. And then in 21, we have everything that's personal services and their shared cost in that, that shared cost center. And then they can see that there's even $10,000 to spend in each of the individual districts. And with that, I'll open it up for discussion and questions.
Just real quick on the travel, I was looking at that other budget docs under the operating expenses. Travel per diem in the 20 budget was 21,000 and it's 63,000. So it's, it looks like it's gone up more than the 13,000 that you were talking about. Now is that?
Well, there are a few other lines that get added to that 21,000. If you're looking at the details, you'll see that there was some mileage, local mileage, out of town mileage, hotels and lodging, all of that, that also gets added to that. And we also incorporate the, the, if you look a little bit lower in your operating, the books, publications, subscriptions and memberships, and as well as the training costs, because quite often their travel for training or registration fees associated with travel. So and that's what we did when we went through the exercise a few months ago, we did incorporate that, those costs into that when we were trying to project out what everyone was intending to spend, those costs were included.
So that line item is very, is very different each for the, for the two years.
Yes.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Any questions of, from the commission on, on our budget? Well, Cecilia, you either did a great job, the lunch has kind of made everybody sleepy or already ready to go home. I don't know, but.
I'm not going to complain.
No, no additional comments or questions? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just the, I think it makes sense, the combining into the one group fund, the things that are all grouped and listing out the other that we have actual control over. I think that makes a lot of sense. That's my only comment.
Agreed. Agreed. Okay, I'm not hearing a lot of chatter. Commissioner Long got back, did she get back with us?
She's back with us.
There.
All right.
I've been sitting right here, David.
Well, you're not on my, on my screen, darn it. Commissioner Welch bumped you off the screen.
Now I'm not even seeing her.
She turned off her video.
Oh, is that what I did? I'm sorry. I hit the wrong button. There we go. Okay.
Barry, did you have anything else you wanted to bring up today?
That's all I have for today.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be back together next Thursday. Is that?
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good weekend, guys.
You too.
Thanks, everyone.